It's called to order at 6:10 PM. I'm gonna ask Father Cyril of Holy Resurrection American Coptic Orthodox Church to please give the invocation today, and we will be led in the pledge of allegiance by our city manager, please.
Thank you, Mayor, for allowing me these blessings. Loving Father who art in heaven, you are the source of wisdom, justice, and peace. We ask you, Lord, to bless this assembly and guide the members of this council. I pray, Lord, that you grant them clarity of mind, unity of purpose, and compassion in their decisions, that all may be done for the good of the people they serve. Lord, we pray for the peace and security of the city of Hawthorne and all its citizens. Lord, we also pray for all our city leaders, the mayor, the city council, the city manager, and all those who faithfully serve our city. We pray that you help and protect our first responders, and that you establish us in your truth and keep us in your light and teach us to walk in righteousness. I pray this in Christ Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as one.
All right, folks, let's take a look. All right, guys, so, um, okay, we have, uh, we just generally just want to-
Do you want to start with Roll Call?
Uh?
Do you want to start with Roll Call?
We can do it right after this part, please. You know, just go ahead, do it, do it. I want you to keep your order.
Councilmember Johnson, councilmember Manning.
Here.
Councilmember Reyes English.
Here.
Mayor Protem Montero.
Present.
Mayor Argus.
Here. Thank you, ma'am. We have the proclamations, and we're gonna be having oral communications coming up, so we want to make sure that everybody knows who's doing the presentation, that that needs to be under 10 minutes per our ordinance that we have established, okay? Go ahead, Metro C-line Extension Update Presentation. Okay, I'm gonna defer to Mayor Protem Alex Montero, he has a very special presentation. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. It's the time of the year that we present a check to the K-9 unit for the Hawthorne Police Department on behalf of the Hawthorne Presidents' Council. As you know, we had the community dinner on, actually, it was a K-9 dinner on May 15, where we fundraising for the K-9 unit. So I want to thank to all the organization and the families and individual who came to dinner that night, so we raised eighty-one hundred dollar. So this check today for the K-9 unit fund is gonna be for eight thousand five hundred dollar. So... If I can ask my treasurer, Mr. Moore, to join me over there, so we can give this check to the K-9 unit department.
Hello, thank you very much. We have Officer Cody Dolan and his dog, Hannibal, correct? We have Lamika Bell and her dog, Time, and then we have Jack Cunningham and his dog, Mattis.
Mattis.
Officer, Officer, you can explain the different type of dogs we have here, three different dogs, if you can explain their purpose and basically their day-to-day operation.
Yeah, absolutely. So first of all, we have Hannibal here, he's a tracking dog, so what we use him for is for finding missing people. Some of those people can involve missing children, people that have severe medical conditions, dementia, Alzheimer's, things of that nature. We have our therapy dog, Time, and what she does is obviously goes around and assists people with difficult times, anything that they can do to be of assistance with other departments and agencies and what they're going through. And then we have Mattis, who is an apprehension dog, and so when we have some, someone of like a more violent nature, we can utilize him.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Let me say this, because, you know, it's been forty-two years, right, that the Hawthorne Presidents' Council has been doing this K-9 fundraising, so it is a pleasure that I came on board twenty-five years ago when Cora Trevor passed away, so we, we kept maintaining the tradition to fundraise for the K-9. And then October is coming up is for the holiday assistance program. So Dick, stand up, please, because you are older than me, but he was one of the founders of the Hawthorne Presidents' Council, because, you know, he's been in this community for ninety-six years.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
All right.
We want you on to do it.
Oh, yeah.
Come on, guys. Come on, come on.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Let's move on to the first item on the regular agenda, Metro C-line Extension Update.
Mr. Mayor, can I chime in really quick?
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Oh, no problem, no problem, thank you. With the influx of events coming up to our region, our next-door neighbors Inglewood, I thought it was important that Public Works and PD talk about some of the things that we have in the pipeline. Councilwoman Katrina Manning brought up the C-line, so I wanted to incorporate that with some of the things we're doing as far as preparing for the events that we have coming nearby our city, but also talk about what we're gonna do for LA-28. So with that, I'd like to introduce DJ from Public Works to start his presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Protem, councilpeople, and City of Hawthorne residents. My name is DJ Torado, Associate Traffic Engineer with the Public Works Department, and I will be giving a brief presentation on the Metro C-line Extension Update. So Metro first announced this extension project back in 2021. It's a four-point mile extension from Redondo Beach to Torrance. There's supposed to be three stations total, two are existing, which is the Marine Avenue Station and the Torrance Transit Station, and then there will be one new station in Redondo Beach near the Galleria. Four stations were initially considered, but the station in Longdale was eventually removed. So initially, there were these three extension options, it's kind of hard to see, but they're blue, orange, and green. Two of those were the Metro Right-of-Way Alignment, they featured both elevated and street level, or there's also a trench option, so underground, and then the third option was on Hawthorne Boulevard, south of the 405 freeway, and that would be, would have been a completely elevated option. And all of these options, just to note, are south of the city of Hawthorne, so it wouldn't have affected residents in terms of construction. So on October 4th, 2023, the city received a letter from the city of Redondo Beach requesting support for the Hawthorne Elevated Alignment Option, so this was the green option right here. Both cities of Redondo Beach and Longdale supported this option due to the limited impact on residents, and it would run on the median of Hawthorne Boulevard. Again, this is south of the city, so not on City of Hawthorne's Hawthorne Boulevard, but the Caltrans-owned Hawthorne Boulevard. And this option would have had the highest ridership estimate compared to the two other options that were proposed by Metro. In January 2024, Hawthorne submitted a letter of support for the Hawthorne Elevated Option, and then during the January 2025, 2024 meeting, the South Bay Cog Board of Directors Meeting, there was a recommendation that was made to support the C-line Extension Project, but not to take a position on which alignment was chosen, so basically, support the Metro Extension Project, but remain neutral. This motion was passed, and, but Hawthorne abstained from voting whether yes or no, because we had already pledged our support for the Hawthorne Elevated Option, so we just remained neutral and abstained. So there was initially a decision to be made by the Metro Board on October 26, but that was postponed. But on April 17, 2024, Metro staff recommended a fourth option, which is what they call the hybrid option, which I'll describe in a second. And then on May 23, 2024, the Board of Directors approved this hybrid option. The couple of caveats that they had was to do further studies and also to refine the cost of the option. So now there's this new fourth option that was proposed and approved. It combined the first two options of the Metro Right-of-Way, but in this case, there's, there's no elevated option anymore, it's just all above ground. There's a little bit of underground portion on 170th and 182nd Street, this is near Condon Avenue between Hawthorne Boulevard and Inglewood Avenue. And the reason why they wanted this underground option was so that it would be separate from any automobile traffic, so none of the, none of the line interferes with any automobile traffic. So this is what the new hybrid option looks like. Again, this goes through Redondo Beach, Longdale, and then also Torrance. So it's completely above ground with a portion of it being underground on 170th and 182nd to completely separate it from automobile traffic. So this new hybrid option, it combines underground and street level elevations, there's no elevated portion, and it's completely separate from automobile, automobile traffic, as I said. The environmental study for this new hybrid option is supposed to be completed by the end of the year by Metro, and the current estimated cost at this moment is 2.2 billion dollars, but that number is subject to change depending on further studies. So that concludes my presentation on the Metro C-line Extension, and I can take any questions.
DJ, is this similar to the Alameda Corridors train that's underneath, underground?
I'm not familiar with the Alameda, um, project.
Do you have any images of the, how it's laid out underground? I know you showed a cross-section.
The only images I was able to find on the Metro website were this one, there is an underground portion on, under 170th and 182nd. Those are the two underground options that I am aware of.
And remind me, the parts that are underground, they're what, street level?
They're complete, they're completely street level, and they're completely on Metro Right-of-Way.
Yeah, thank you, DJ, for the presentation. Yeah, actually, this C-line Extension has been very controversial, you know, it's been years in the works, because first, you know, when Longdale was the one, you know, to raise the red flag because it was going to go through some community, and then also they discovered some type of Native American, you know, burial ground that make the Metro decide, okay, we're gonna do something different. So Redondo Beach and Torrance was in agreement to do the elevated one, but the Metro said it was gonna cost a lot of money, more money to do the elevated one. So that is what they came up with this hybrid option, so to just, so, so, so Longdale could be happy, and also Redondo Beach, and also Torrance. So the hybrid one, actually, the South Bay Cog, we haven't even voted on it, we don't know, you know, the Metro decided they were gonna do this, and then South Bay Cog, all the sixteen cities, we didn't get a position to say we're gonna go with a hybrid, because we understood what Longdale was trying to do, and then we understood also what Redondo and Torrance wanted, but the Metro didn't do it because of cost. So this is where all these things, because even the LA Board Supervisor got involved, you know, Holly Mitchell, she did some town hall meeting in Longdale and in Torrance to get the opinion, because this was very controversial. So now that's what this hybrid option is, is on, but I think the Metro have- So now that's what this hybrid option is, is on, but I think the metro have not even voted completely, right, how much it's going to cost.
They have not. Part of the caveats was to do further studies on this, so they had an estimated cost of $2.2 billion, but that is subject to change.
Yeah. So it's been controversial.
Okay.
To the Chair.
Yes.
Thank you, DJ. Great presentation. A couple of suggestions in the presentation to give a definition of what's below grade, above grade. Can you give a distinction between the two? Because oftentimes, folk don't understand that term and what that means, so...
So below grade means underground, kind of like under a tunnel kind of thing. Above grade is elevated, so not on the same level as like a street. It would be higher up. So elevated option and underground option, they're all completely separate from automobile traffic. One is just under the ground and one is high up, above the ground.
Yeah, and the way that came about is just a lot of communities, especially communities of color, were oftentimes burdened with the, the noise, the traffic, really the unfairness, if you will, because other cities that were influential at times would receive the below grade. And so it's just good to have a definition of where that came from, and it's good that people champion what's good for them and their community. I would prefer below grade. We already have a train that's loud enough here every morning, you know, 7, 8 o'clock in the morning, let alone above-grade train going through. So it's just, you know, added congestion, noise, things like this, but it's coming, right? It's coming. I'm glad that they had us engaged. I'm glad that Councilmember Montero is part of that group. But there's a lot of different things that come out of that, and this is, you know, a new one, a hybrid, you know. Hopefully, we're finished with this and there's not another alternative, because at this point, you just kind of, you don't have any trust anymore in the agencies that are trying to put transportation forth. So I'm glad that our city's doing this. I'm glad that the city manager brought it to the constituents here in Hawthorne so they could see the effects or not that this new line will bring. But in a nutshell, great work to you and your, your team on the presentation and just keeping abreast as to how it's going to affect Hawthorne and how better to navigate a possibility of disturbance. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
To the Chair.
Yes.
So I just want to say, DJ, thank you so much. The presentation was amazing. Thank you. I just wanted to reiterate the impact to our residents. I just wanted to make sure that we just talk about that because when we had our previous discussion in regards to this, that was something that was really important to me so that our residents know what the impact of this project is going to bring.
Yeah, so the current, there's a current station on Marine Avenue that's at the south end of the City of Hawthorne, and then the remaining extension goes south of that, so there would be minimal impact to the City of Hawthorne residents. The remaining extension goes through Redondo Beach, Longdale, and then to Torrance.
Thank you.
Thank you. I want to echo some of the concerns of some of my colleagues here with regards to the metro running along Hawthorne Boulevard and through some of the cities. I think it's running through the, some of the rail lines, right?
Correct.
Yeah, so once it runs through the center median, I would prefer absolutely that it be underground to mitigate any impact it has, like on, on the community. We see the effects. I've ridden the metros through, so through some of our city streets leading up to downtown, up through, you know, up through portions of the Hollywood area that are at street level and such. And those portions, you know, just, it's, it's just not attractive. It just, metros work in a lot of other cities, but our dynamic mix here is, is, is going to bring a, you know, a different, it's gonna, it's not going to be the wonderful, beautiful result that we would love for it to be. If it's subterranean, it makes it much easier. People go, they climb down to go to the metro and to go wherever they're going. They're not out there just loitering at street level, and anybody could get there. Anybody can get access to those rail cars. People could sneak in. It's more difficult if it's subterranean. People have to go underground. So that's my two cents, and that's something I would like to see.
Yeah, just for the people to understand that the, the metro, the reason they want to extend the Sea Line is because they want to connect South Bay with LAX and also to the valley eventually. So that is what they're trying to see, if they can get people out of their car into the metro link so they can be, go get from point A to Z without using their cars. Because South Bay, you know, from Torrance to Redondo Beach, so they don't have direct connection per se to connect to LAX or connect to the valley. So that's what the metro is trying to do in the future, so we'll be all connect South Bay with, with towards the north of us.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, no, I really appreciate your presentation. Thank you, Mayor Protem Montero for this. But it's just kind of funny how we're 100 years behind all other cities who had the sense to have a, a metro system in their cities. We actually had one. We had the red, red car system that used to travel throughout Hawthorne. Hawthorne Boulevard, if you guys could see that, that's a wide boulevard. It's not just because they felt, oh, we want to make a wide boulevard in the center median where people are parking. Now, that used to be the tracks for the red car line that would go from downtown down to Redondo Beach. Okay, so that was the effects of the motor industry, the automobile industry. They wanted to take that away and make Los Angeles metropolitan area automobile-dependent community. And so now, we're trying to catch up. It's, you know, as you can see, it's very difficult when we're overbuilt. Thank you, sir. City Manager, you have another presentation?
Absolutely. DJ will present again with the chief. Excuse me, and as I mentioned, this is going to talk about the Crenshaw Boulevard Signal Improvement Intersection Project tied in with LA 28 and what we're doing as a city preparing for the mass events coming, you know, regionally to our city. Thank you.
So this is the Crenshaw Boulevard Signal Improvement and Intersection Project. Just a quick recap on the project progress and to gather feedback. So a project overview, the purpose of the Crenshaw Boulevard project is to improve traffic circulation and safety along Crenshaw Boulevard. To do this, we're going to be upgrading and coordinating traffic signals at seven different intersections along Crenshaw Boulevard, improve pedestrian and bicycle safety at the 105 on and off ramps, and also add LA 28 Olympics branding to existing bus stops and also develop new ones. We're currently in the preliminary design phase of this project, and we have funding for this project. One of them is from the MTA Measure M grant. That's $260,000 for design, and then we received $4 million from Congresswoman Maxine Waters. So this is the area all along Crenshaw Boulevard, from the north near Inglewood, and then all the way south near Gardena and the LA County unincorporated area. Some intersections are shared with Gardena, and we're coordinating with them as long, as well as LA County. So some improvements that we are developing are interchange improvements. So this is by 120th and Crenshaw Boulevard, a two-way protected bike lane that'll connect from the station that is underneath the 105 freeway on Crenshaw Boulevard to the Dominguez Channel Bike Way. A lot of concerns regarding pedestrian safety at the on and off ramps on the I-105. So we are planning on doing pedestrian signals at ramps. So this would require vehicles to stop for pedestrians and bicyclists using traditional traffic signals to yield and stop for pedestrians. We are also doing some median enhancements to discourage pedestrians from crossing mid-block and also create placemaking opportunities. And I will show you some examples in a second about how we are planning to do some LA 28 Olympics branding through these median enhancements. Underneath the 105 freeway on Crenshaw Boulevard, we are also doing improvements to the bus stop over there with a bus stop island and protected bike lane to route bicyclists on a boating, on a floating bus island to avoid conflicts and also increase bicycle safety. On this, on the intersections along Crenshaw Boulevard, we are going to be doing accessible pedestrian signals. So those push buttons that you see that let you know when to cross safely. Curb ramp upgrades to make sure they are ADA compliant. And also on Crenshaw Boulevard and El Segundo Boulevard, we are going to be upgrading the signal so that it is a protected left turn instead of where you have to yield to make a left turn on the northbound and southbound approaches, and also upgrade all the crosswalks so that they are high visible and increase pedestrian safety that way. In collaboration with the county, we are also upgrading pedestrian signals, updating the traffic signal wiring, and also installing new signal cabinets, poles, and traffic signal heads. So a lot of the equipment is probably around 30 years old, so we're updating them to make sure that they are new and updated and compliant. So the next steps we are taking for this project, we are currently developing plans and specifications and doing cost estimates, and then we hope to go out to bid for construction in the spring of 2026. In terms of the LA 28 Olympics branding potential, we're going to be upgrading a lot of the bus stops along Crenshaw Boulevard to improve existing bus stop amenities and also provide Olympic branding. So there's a sample branding you can see on there that has like the Olympics logo and also Hawthorne as well. And with, along with the LA 28 Hawthorne-specific custom logos that we will be presenting in a second. And then some potential median enhancements along Crenshaw Boulevard are city gateway monuments to let residents and visitors know that this is the City of Hawthorne and to improve and enhance our identity. Decorative fencing along the median, so this would attract, this would prevent people from crossing mid-block, but also allow for decorative fencing, and also putting landscaping on the medians to create a welcoming city gateway. So for the Olympics portion, I'm going to turn it over to the Chief Tomatani.
Good evening, everyone. Mayor Vargas, Mayor Protem Montero, council members, elected officials in the Hawthorne community. It's a pleasure to be here tonight, and I hope that after the presentations today collectively between DJ and myself, everybody tuning in will be able to have a better context and visualization of what city staff has been working towards in the lead-up to the 2028 Olympics as well as the Paralympics. Those Games will be held at venues throughout the Southern California region, and the closest ones to us locally here in Hawthorne will be in the City of Inglewood at SoFi Stadium. Under the direction of the city manager, each city department has recently been focusing on evaluating, preparing, and improving the City of Hawthorne in five main categories. We feel that these categories will help set the City of Hawthorne up for the future, even after the Olympics and Paralympics have ended. Department heads and management have been working on these five categories for years. First focused on by the city's Community Improvement Task Force, and more recently drilled down by the city's Special Events Committee. And I think it's appropriate to recognize some of the people who sit on that Special Events Committee so that you are aware of who is thinking about the future and setting the city up for success. So from the city manager's office, we have Mr. Vaughn Norris and Catherine Alcantara. From our Hawthorne Community Television, we have Eric Chavez. From our Community Services Department, Kiwanah Bowie. From the airport, Guido Hernandez. From Public Works, long list of people. Akbar Faroki, Selena Acuna, and Angela Lee. From Finance, Felice Lopez. From Planning, Greg McLean. And from Housing, Kimberly Mack. And there's a reason why that committee is so diverse, and it's because everybody has a role in preparing the City of Hawthorne for the Olympic Games. I'll start here with the first category because it's kind of my safety blanket. It's public safety and emergency preparedness. Hawthorne is part of Los Angeles County Mutual Aid Region, Area G. There are nine municipal cities that make up Area G. Area G already has planned tabletop exercises and practical exercises in the lead-up to the 2028 Games, specifically with the purpose to ensure that each of our agencies can operate seamlessly with one another should an emergency occur. These trainings will also include municipal and county fire departments. This initiative was undertaken last month with the initial meeting of a summit between law enforcement and fire department executives specifically to discuss best practices for responses to any regional emergencies. As city council members, I'm sure you are all aware, but perhaps some of our members of the public are not aware, the Police Department also has a certified emergency room physician who doubles as Hawthorne Police Department's medical director. What people don't know is that our medical director also provides similar services to several other South Bay law enforcement agencies. And as a result of that, we now have one medical director, obviously, three certified paramedics, and 20 emergency medical technicians amongst your police department staff. And while this expertise and training is something that we hope we never have to use, it certainly is ace in the hole, so to say, something that's good to have in our back pockets in case of an emergency or natural disaster. Continuing on with public safety, I already touched a bit on mutual aid programs, but I'd like to add here that the Hawthorne Police Department has working experience as a result of our partnership with the City of Inglewood and having our officers consistently engaged with regional partners at SoFi Stadium, Intuit Dome Now, and The Forum. The other bullet points on this slide, everyone's chuckling. This is the result of Greg McLean doing the PowerPoint and being kind of a bully towards the Police Department. Just want to add that. The other bullet points on this slide are the positive side effects of this real-world experience. Simply, they act as safeguards we can put in place to ensure that we have the maximum deployable resources during the Olympic Games, during the Paralympic Games, should deploying additional manpower and staffing become necessary. DJ is obviously the, the resident expert on this, along with his counterparts or cohorts from Public Works. But the next category here is infrastructure and mobility readiness. As previously mentioned, staff has been working on setting Hawthorne up for long-term success, even if they didn't realize they were doing it. This is especially true when it comes to our Public Works Department. At times, it's easy to dismiss, be personally annoyed with, or complain about infrastructure improvements that have already occurred, are occurring, or will occur throughout our city. The detours, construction noise, and delays while commuting are certainly not fun, but the end result is more than worth the temporary inconvenience. In addition to what DJ has already mentioned, signals are scheduled to be upgraded along major corridors throughout our city. These include Crenshaw Boulevard, the intersection of El Segundo and the 405 freeway, and the Rosecrans Avenue corridors. Any one of us who have driven through those areas knows that sometimes those traffic signals aren't the most efficient at allowing us to spend the least amount of time during the day of community. If anybody has had the pleasure of recently traveling on 120th Street anywhere between the 405 freeway and Crenshaw, you, I hope you have taken time to notice that is now recently resurfaced, repaved. There are no potholes, and there's even an additional turn pocket to enter the 105 freeway off of 120th Street between Prairie Avenue and Crenshaw. That's all as a result of the vision of our Public Works Department to help alleviate traffic congestion on our city streets. In addition to all of that, as DJ mentioned, dedicated bicycle lanes are already in place on Hawthorne Boulevard between El Segundo and Rosecrans. We hope that these continue to enhance safety for our bicyclists and someday lead to less traffic congestion throughout the city. Public Works is looking to expanding these bicycle lanes to other high-traffic corridors in the city, including Crenshaw and Prairie. DJ ended his portion of tonight's presentation by talking a little bit about some of our branding initiatives. And we think that we have an opportunity to put Hawthorne on the map in, in partnership with the upcoming Olympic Games. So we're focusing on branding. We should view both the Olympics and Paralympics as an opportunity to showcase our city, and more importantly than that, what our city has to offer. The branding associated with the, both the Olympics and Paralympics is, however, extremely regulated, so we are limited into what we are allowed to utilize those emblems and those logos for. Our intention is to utilize this customized branding. Our intention is to utilize this customized branding as in an effort to bring attention, positive attention, to the city of Hawthorne. We expect people to be passing through Hawthorne who might not normally do so, and we want to remind them while they're here that Hawthorne is someplace that they want to come back and visit often. Parking, parking, parking. The bane of all of Southern California and Hawthorne is no different. The city has control over two sites, which might be leveraged to provide some parking relief. The parking lot of the current Ainsworth Sports Center and the city-owned portions of the parking lots between 129th and 131st Street, just west of Hawthorne Boulevard. I'll have a map here up in a second to help you all visualize that. Assuming that we can identify and secure some funding sources, there is, exists, there exists the possibility that we might be able to erect a couple of parking structures at those locations. And if successful, these structures could potentially serve as a future source of revenue for the city, funds from which could be utilized to continue to, or to continue to move forward with additional infrastructure improvements that will benefit everyone. These structures might be connected with the Metro Park and Ride at 111th Street and Hawthorne Boulevard via proposed dedicated bus lanes. Again, all of this is funding dependent, but I assure you, if you've ever listened to our Public Works staff talk about how they secure grants, that is, that is a reasonable possibility. So here is the map that I was discussing a little bit earlier. The two proposed possible parking structures are listed on the map, Ainsworth Center and just west of Hawthorne Boulevard off of 129th Street. And if we are able to, or for successful with this, we hope to be able to encourage the use of public transportation, which would have a positive effect on traffic congestion, alleviate some of our parking scarcity problem, and increase safety for our bicyclists. And the map also shows the possible dedicated bus and bicycle lanes that all culminate, or that all end at the park and ride lot at 111th and Hawthorne Boulevard. Category three, community programs and engagement. Hawthorne, because of its Community Services Department, is no stranger to programs and engagement. In fact, it's one of our strengths, and we plan to leverage that to our advantage. The proposed civic center and accompanying civic park, together with our other parks, are legitimate sites that are more than capable of hosting a myriad of events related to the Olympics. These can include watch parties for Olympic events, and we've had some experience with this. Any of us who have been able to attend one of our local Movies in the Park events, or the very recent Movies in the Pool event that was super successful, this, this is where our working expertise will be put into play. We can draw from past experiences from our athletic programs such as community services, engaging our youth with a basketball skills competition, and our footsaw programs. We can leverage future partnerships, such as local Little Leagues or organizations, for baseball and softball skills competitions. But before we do any of that, we do have to prep some of our venues for these events. And in preparation for these events, we would like to place Olympic-themed murals at some of our city facilities. This might even be in an opportunity to get some local artists or the Fine Arts Commission involved. We will utilize the approved Hawthorne-centric Olympic and Paralympic logos for city parks, buildings, and city vehicles. At previous council meetings, comments have been made about supporting a contingent from Cape Verde here in Hawthorne. That's just the surface. I had no idea where Cape Verde was, nor did I know that Portuguese was its official language, but just in a brief amount of research that I've done on it, and it just leads, because everything for me leads to food, my next curiosity is what is the food like? So we need to capitalize on these opportunities for cultural exchange and better understanding of other cultures throughout, throughout the world. None of this will be successful unless we are able to partner with the people in our community who have skin in the game. City staff won't be able to bear the entire load. We need to rely on our community partners for all kinds of support, and those community partners include service organizations, Hawthorne Business Connect, our chamber partners, local school districts, and local businesses. The community services and, the Community Services Department intends to rebrand its existing programs with the phrase Play Hawthorne. We want to pay respect and homage to prior Olympians and Olympians from the region. Hawthorne has a park that's named after a local Olympian, Jim Thorpe. The city, through community services, can ensure that future generations know about him and his accomplishments, as well as the accomplishment of other previous Olympians from the region. Using the Games as a vehicle to increase understanding between cultures does not have to be combined to the realm of athletics. We can explore customs, music, and food with the, with the athletic competition being the reason why we get together. Again, branding is going to be super important for the city. At our parks, we have athletic fields, scoreboards, and wind screens that can all be updated at minimal cost to include the new logos along with the locations previously mentioned by DJ. Similar to initiatives by our Veteran Affairs Commission, we can place banners along Hawthorne Boulevard, but instead of with veterans this time, we can focus on countries that are going to be participating in the Olympic Games. With the unveiling of the Hawthorne Online Store in the upcoming months, Olympic-themed merchandise with a Hawthorne flavor will be offered for sale to the public and staff, thereby just indirectly increasing awareness of what's coming. Please bear with me. Category four, economic development and tourism. Our success is going to be dependent on partnerships with our community, and perhaps in no other category will that partnership be more pronounced than economic development and tourism. We will look for local businesses and opportunities to engage in partnerships who will help us sponsor our Olympic-themed pop-up events. Restaurants that want to showcase food from a country competing in the Olympics. A locally-centered restaurant week where local eateries might offer a fixed menu, amplification of which would be pushed out on city social media, an advertising opportunity for our local businesses. Cultural groups might want to put on a presentation at local parks to increase understanding about another country. During the Super Bowl in 2022, the Hawthorne Airport experienced a high volume of air traffic, much heavier than normal, and therefore, our airport staff will continue to work hand-in-hand with the FAA to anticipate what that increased volume will be surrounding the Olympic Games and make adjustments as necessary to ensure the safety of our community. City staff, as well as local hotels, are already educating ourselves on the requirements to be considered as a potential housing location for workers associated with the upcoming Olympic Games. We anticipate that there will be similar opportunities for other service industries to be listed as viable contractors for the LA 28 Committee. For example, security services, transportation services, or catering services. Our intention is to learn what those processes will be to be included in a list of 20, LA 28-approved vendors, and assist any of our interested local vendors working towards that goal via training and certification programs. We will develop and publish both an electronic and print version of a visitor's guide with two goals in mind. Assist those from outside the area to get what they want in Hawthorne, kind of an immediate reward, and highlight what the city has to offer, more of a long-term recognition, hoping that people come back long after the Olympic Games have ended. Around the timeframe of the Games, we also want to incentivize people to stay in Hawthorne, visit its amenities, and patronize our businesses, and we want them to come back in the future. Category five, finances. We don't want to focus solely on visitors to the city benefiting from our efforts. Our own residents and businesses, we have to make sure that they benefit from these efforts as well. So with a focus on fiscal responsibility, the necessity of pursuing grants, partnerships, sponsorships, and utilization of facilities and property already under city control, we need to continue to invest in ourselves. Current efforts related to the community that benefit everyone will, will continue or even increase utilizing the revenue sources we have available to us. Our wise decisions in the past and, and recent past are going to come back and help us out in the future. And therefore, the city will set aside a portion of this revenue for outreach and events, including funding for the LA 28 Games. Because public staff, we are employees, and we do cost money, we'll begin budgeting for potential overtime expenditures during the Games, and all departments will seek grant opportunities to help us cover those costs. I mentioned a little bit earlier that the logo for the, both the Olympics and Paralympics is extremely regulated. And what is up on this slide right now are the logos, the proposed logos for the Paralympic Games. And the city has received information that the only portion of this logo that we are allowed to alter in any way to make it more personalized to Hawthorne is with the letter "A." So you could see all three of those logos that are up there are identical for the Paralympics, but the "A" has been changed for some customization. While it's still a work in progress, staff has worked within the confines of these design restrictions with the goal of personalizing the authorized logos to make them more a part of Hawthorne. And the result as of right now is... So on the left or in the center of that slide is the logo for the Olympic Games, and on the right would be the logo for the Paralympic Games. These are the logos that we feel, we feel will be the most effective in branding. Hawthorne is part of the regional events in 2028. Both comply with the design restrictions imposed by the LA 28 Committee. That keeps us out of trouble, keeps Mr. Robert Kim off my back. Both incorporate the recently updated and adopted City of Hawthorne emblem that we spent a lot of time and effort to design and implement. And in the lead up to 2028, we intend to place these on city vehicles, facilities, publications, and merchandise. We hope that they will stand as visual reminders of the efforts of city staff to continuously make Hawthorne a better place, not just now, not just during the Olympics, but long after the Olympics have left. Thank you all for your time. Appreciate it.
That was awesome.
That was great.
Yes, ma'am?
To the chair?
Yeah.
This is why I'm proud to be city councilwoman in the city of Hawthorne. Can we give it up? Oh, my God, that was super amazing. You guys did such an awesome, awesome job. You covered every possible opportunity that we can capitalize as the city of Hawthorne for the Olympics. And I love, one of the things that you said is that it's not just during Olympics, but for years to come. And that's, that's super important because not only are we thinking about our visitors, but we're thinking about our community. And it's so important that we keep things beautiful for them as well. And so I look forward to all of what you said today, like seeing it come into fruition because it's a beautiful thing, and I am so, 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 so happy and proud of staff for all the hard work you guys did to put this together. This is amazing, very thought-provocative. I mean, I just, I'm speechless because it is definitely, I didn't expect so much, like, wow, you guys covered so many things. So I just want to say thank you so much for all your hard work, and I appreciate all in that logo. Oh, my God, like, I will, can we change that? No, I'm just kidding. I really love that, but thank you so much. I appreciate you guys.
To the chair?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Katrina Manning. So I'm taking notes, DJ and Chief. And I'm glad I do because there was a lot covered here tonight with your presentation, and it was a good presentation, so kudos to you both and your staff. First, we need to acknowledge the funding and how we're going to do this, right? So kudos to our measure M, Vaughn, and Congresswoman Maxine Waters. So that's, that's great right there, right? Because you can't do much if you don't have the funding. I wanted to talk a little bit about the pedestrian signals, on-ramps, off-ramps. I hope that we're collaborating with Caltrans because, as we know right now, we have a lot of stolen wire, a lot of lights that are out in our off-ramps, on-ramps, off-ramps at all of our corridors. And so that's important. And second, I want to assure that I was looking at some of these boxes are above-grade. I was hoping to do the underground electric wiring and things like this so that it's least accessible to those that are stealing our wires. So do you have anything there?
With regards to the pedestrian safety, we are collaborating with Caltrans to make sure that pedestrian safety is top of mind. Regarding the electrical stuff, most of our electrical equipment is underground, so the traffic signals are all underground, all the wiring for that. The only ones that are above ground, I believe, are related to Edison, so that's out of the Public Works scope. But all of the traffic signals, the wiring for that, all of the pedestrian enhancements, those are all underground wiring.
Okay. We're going to continue to work with Caltrans, especially cleanup. But DJ, you guys are doing great. The cabinets, the cabinets that you talked about, which was the poles and signals and things like this, the new equipment, which is long overdue too. And I like the fact that we have the, the branding that was just, you know, displayed here earlier, but some of the bus stop upgrades and things like this, all throughout the city is going to be great. I really like the, the potential medium enhancements and just everything from the monuments to the decorated fencing to just the landscaping altogether. And I'm hoping that all of these RFPs that go out for these types of enhancements are great RFPs that have, you know, history of doing this, especially the decorated fencing. If you go to Las Vegas, that's what you see, a lot of decorated fencing on the freeways, a lot of rock formation with, you know, different displays of art. And so that's really great. I really like the fact that you're looking for a local artist to potentially draw some murals for us and secure those murals with that special paint so that there's, they're not damaged and secured for, for a minute, at least we could have them for a while, right? That's important. I really want to see small business, home business, micro business in regards to the art of folks that have the talent and skills to do that. There's great art that I've been seeing with regards to Kobe Bryant and regards to the Dodgers and the, the arts that's coming out of Los Angeles. So there's a lot of great potential. I really like the fact that we're going to be looking at our water tower to do that huge display we could be seeing for miles, right? I'm really proud of that. And, and I was going to ask about city flags with the Olympic logo, but it looks like you covered that at the very end. So kudos on that because I really like to see a flag that we could sit here, right, out here somewhere, displayed here. And I know Vaughn did a Hawthorne flag. I think we need to at some point put a Hawthorne flag here in our chamber. But there's lots of great synergy because we're going to be putting a lot of this stuff into our three capital projects that are really exciting for, and, and it's going to really look great for Hawthorne. The city facilities with regards to the local art I talked about. The Play Hawthorne, we know that Dr. Kelsey, the optometrist, he's my doctor, he was a former Olympic torch carrier in 1984, so that would be great to reach out to him. And there's some other folks, and yes, Jim Thorpe Park, the first park, I think, named after an Olympic. And losing our high school, you know, that has history there too. So working with the school districts and, and sharing their history of Olympians and champions. The vending, training, and certification assistant, that's great again for the small businesses, for those that are looking to do business in the city of Hawthorne, making sure that they have what they need, and they're working with credential and certification to assure that there's no interruption in their work and what they hope to do with a lot, a lot of open jobs that are coming for 2028, including transportation and security and those alike, and development of the projects that we have coming here in the city to look forward to 2028 and what we look like in, in branding. I'm really excited, just out of respect for all of your departments, everyone that took charge... charge, from every department that was named, Vaughn and, and Chief, that's awesome. The vision that everyone has is one accord, and we're looking exactly at that, right? You just showed us what that looks like. And to be able to just feature that in its upcoming is really promising. And I think at some point, we're going to have to do some PSAs and do some public announcements on things like this to really bring out all of this so that the community at large can see how, how hard Hawthorne is working on the 2028. And also want to thank Councilmember Montero for the country that we're ultimately looking to partner with. So lots of great stuff happening, Mayor, and I really, I really appreciate, Chief, what you're doing. I mean, that's a lot of work. It's a lot of work. You were tasked, everyone was tasked, and you guys really, you really outdone yourselves. You really did. So thank you so much.
Okay, so my council colleagues have said everything, but I have to say I'm speechless, right? Because I know Vaughn keeps saying that we had, you know, LA 28 Committee, but I have no idea you guys have done such tremendous job to put all of this together. So your vision of LA 28 is fantastic because that's exactly what we need for the City of Hawthorne, right? Because we've been tired of all these other cities being involved, and in Hawthorne, it was just a pass by. So we need to make sure that we're going to capture this ancient of the games right here in the City of Hawthorne. And that is what my main point is to bring other culture here, right? So they can come here and party and, and provide food. Actually, I have a contact for the Portugal Olympic, I have the name of the head of there. So who knows, we're going to have more than one country coming to this, to our city to be, for us to be a host city. But I want to say to Vaughn and to all the committee chief, DJ, fantastic work, all of you, because without the vision of all the departments, Hawthorne would not move forward. So, so your vision actually make us proud, and I'm very proud of this happening. And the other thing that I know that we in negotiation with, also with Inglewood, is about that one lane, one lane bus on Hawthorne Boulevard that during the games or even during the events, even not just the Olympic, but you know, for the, for the upcoming World Cup and, and the Super Bowl XXVII. So there is a lot of stuff that's going to be happening here. And then Hawthorne had to be in forefront to make sure that we bring revenues to our cities because it depends on those trans oriented taxi, you know? Like I said, to bring more restaurant depot in our cities, you know, a little pack of restaurants of different countries so people can come in and enjoy that. So, and that will be a partnership between the people of Hawthorne and the international people and the international committee. And that's what we want to see, that it will last for beyond 28. Because we understand, you know, LA is a destination. You know, there's a lot of tourists coming here every year, so we want to make sure that Hawthorne will catch some of that every year, will have a stake per se on those tourists that's coming from overseas every single year. Because now they say, we're going to Hawthorne because we know where Hawthorne is, right? The home of the Beach Boys, all these other good stuff that we imagine. Even, even believe it or not, the Prime Minister of Cape Verde is coming here on the, on September 21st, and he's going to visit SpaceX. So all these things is, is happening because Hawthorne is on the map. And we want to make sure that little folks that have a little dollar or a little euro is coming to the City of Hawthorne. So thank you for that. This is fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen, for putting this great presentation together with the help of staff as well. The Youth Hope Month Sanctuary Hope Presentation?
So unfortunately, the person wasn't able to come, so I'm just going to give this to them, but thank you.
Do you want to place it on the next agenda?
No.
Okay, thank you. We have a final presentation from Councilmember Manning from the Carpenters Union?
Yes. So the carpenters are going to do a presentation, The Many Faces of Wage Threat in the construction industry. Please come up.
You guys expect me to use this? I'm playing. I just...
You need to use the mic. Thank you.
All right. I'll pull up the power point.
We have it on the presentation, right? Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh. There you go. That was a lot easier.
All right, well, thank you, Mayor, Mayor Prota and council members for giving us a chance to show you a little bit of what we see here in The Many Faces of Wage Theft. This particular gentleman that's on, on the screen there, that's, that's not one of them. This is actually Kobe Joe's son, who is a carpenter, happens to be a carpenter, he's actually on the field working. So Kobe Joe happened to see his presentation a little bit earlier, he was very proud to see his son up there on the screen. So just wanted to share that really quick. So before we get into our presentation, my name's Salvador George, I'm one of the representatives with the Carpenters Union. And I just want to clarify, this issue that we want to talk to you about today, it's nothing to do with between union and non-union. This is just in the construction industry as a whole and the many people that wage theft affects. So with that, I'd like to also introduce our brothers and sisters that are here with me today. They feel very strongly about this situation that's happening in our communities, and they wanted to join us to be a part of this. So The Many Faces of Wage Theft. Industry fraud, wage theft practices. The City of Hawthorne, like many cities, is impacted when contractors cut corners, these practices cheat workers, shortchange taxpayers, and undercut honest contractors. Transparency ordinance, like the one adopted in surrounding cities, establishes clear permitting rules and disclosure requirements so that all contractors are held accountable. And if you can see on the screen, there's just some of the things that we see happening in the construction industry. So construction companies, they scheme to violate tax, insurance, and labor laws. This affects honest contractors, working families, and the missing middle are victims. Cheating contractors steal about $3 billion yearly from taxpayers, affecting state revenue, potential for more housing. Cheating undermines the integrity of the industry and increases the labor shortage. Now, the different schemes that we've ran into. We know the playbook. Some of these contractors are paying the workers in cash, using 1099s to misclassify employees, hiding payroll, and also bouncing checks. Our ordinance addresses this directly by requiring contractors and subcontractors on large projects to disclose any past state, federal labor violations before they can pull a permit. This is modeled after our neighbor cities, amendments to the municipal code, which prevent bad actors from continuing these harmful practices. Once again, this, if you look at the screens, are some of the schemes that, that we see out there in the field. By the way, we, we monitor a lot of the construction projects in the community, and this is just some of the stuff that we've seen from, from the workers, that they come up to us and explain to us what's actually happening to them on the job site. I'd like to show, I'd like to share a little bit of something that we ran into not too long ago with some of the representatives here. We went to a job site, four in the morning, we knocked on the door, we went in there, saw some, because we noticed a light that was on, and the construction site was empty. So it's four in the morning, you can see the lights that are visible because the whole building didn't have power yet. It was temporary powers, it didn't, they shouldn't have any lights on inside. We walk in, speak to one of the workers, and we noticed a makeshift stove, and he was on a hammock. And we're wondering, like, are you living here? The, the construction site is, is just bare wood. There's no drywall, there's no running water. Continue looking around, and we happen to see bottles filled with pee in there where he was sleeping at. And we're like, well, that's not normal. We started talking to the gentleman, and he said that part of his, a part of his job was to live in the job and pretty much be security for the job site. But he also worked there during the day. So we asked him, did you get paid for this second shift? He goes, no. He goes, and I also have to pay rent to them. So we saw another hammock moving in a little darker room towards the back, and then we realized, wait, there's two hammocks here. I was like, somebody else here with you? He goes, oh, yeah, that's my son. So can we speak to him? Son wakes up, he's like, yeah, I also work here. I was like, wait, how are you guys building this construction? You're on a construction job site, how come you guys can't afford to rent a house around here? They said, sometimes we don't get paid on time, sometimes we have to wait up to five weeks to get payment. Lo and behold, we see a third hammock. So we're like, oh, this is getting out of control. We were expecting to see another worker on that hammock, and what we, what we found when the person woke up, it was a young girl who was going to go to school. This is an LAUSD school, she had her, her ID with her still. She was going to get ready that morning, and in a few hours, go to high school. This is an LAUSD project. So these are some of the things that we see on the job site, along with these other schemes that catches our attention. And we want to bring it to the community and just bring awareness to what we see out there and how transparency ordinance can stop a lot of this from happening. So I'll continue my presentation and give you guys a little bit more information of who it affects. So who gets screwed in this situation? Contractors. Law abiding, responsible contractors who, once again, this is not a union and a non-union issue. We have responsible contractors in the community that are non-union. But it also takes them out of the chance of getting these jobs when cheating contractors because they cannot compete against low bidding cheaters, and they end up losing work because their bid is a little bit too high because they follow the rules. Government. Once again, California loses out on unreported revenue that can fund housing production. And the workers. Workers end up building homes they cannot afford to live in without government subsidies. And in the end, our community. Families subjected to this status quo who cannot afford to buy a house or pay the rent, just like the situation that we ran into where the high school student was living on one of these job sites. So what is a transparency ordinance? It's very simple. It's a local policy solution to fight wage theft in the City of Hawthorne. And we believe the City of Hawthorne should adopt the subcontractor disclosure ordinance with strict transparency rules for contractors, such as the city of Irvine has done, San Diego, the county of San Diego. And a lot of our local cities around here, our neighboring cities have adopted, adopted something like this. It's a very easy checklist. If a contractor has violated wage violations in the past, it doesn't keep them from working in the city, but at least the city knows who's in town and who's working in the community. They can still perform the work. They just have to disclose whether or not they've been involved in these types of violations. It, it's as easy as a check mark. So if they come in and they apply for a permit or a building permit, they just have to check off whether or not they've been involved only in the past five years. So it doesn't go back full history, it's just in the recent five years. So we know that some contractors clean up their act, and they do a little better, and that's good, we want them to progress, right? Here, you'll see a map of our neighboring cities around here that have adopted this ordinance, one being Carson, City of Compton, Culver City, Gardena, Maywood, Long Beach, and the list goes on and on. These are a lot of cities, once again, in the communities that they believe a transparency ordinance like this is necessary, and they've, they've adopted it and they put it into play. So with that, once again, this ordinance is, is not anti-development, it's pro-community. It ensures that when we grow, we do so responsibly with transparency, accountability, and fairness at the center. Once again, this transparency ordinance is not for our neighbors building an ADU, this is for someone who's going to build 20 units or above, and if it's a commercial space, it'll be a 20,000 square foot commercial space or above. Those are big, decent sized projects. So it won't affect our, like I said, if our neighbors are building an ADU or something like that, this is not going to affect any of them from having to disclose who's going to build their, their project. With that, if, if there be any questions I can answer for you, give you guys a little bit more information of what that transparency ordinance looks like, I'd be happy to answer
Any questions, comments? Okay.
In behalf of my brothers and sisters that are here with me today, I want to thank you once again for giving us the opportunity to explain to you a little bit better what the transparency ordinance looks like, and hopefully, the City of Hawthorne can also join the surrounding cities and adopt something similar. Thank you again.
I have a brief question. I, I don't dispute any of this being, you know, people getting away with things. But you did give me a lot of examples of these violations and some bad actors, right? How do you compile that information?
So the way we compile a lot of this information is, we have representatives that go to job sites, and they get some of this information, but there's also compliance companies that share this information with us. You can pull this information from the state website, there's a state website that shares information of wage violations that have happened in the construction industry, and that's public information. And that's actually where you would go to, to cross-reference whether or not a contractor checked off that box. That's the same website that you would go to, to verify if they've been in any violations, wage violations with their workers.
Okay, no, that, you understand where I'm going. So it's like, you compile this information, your advocacy, you know, labor unions were supposed to be defending the working man and woman, and don't you have like an enforcement agency or a legal team that you could actually, like they say, you know, on some of these, some of these bad actors so that, you know? Why, why, I mean, it's just not good. And why not include ADUs within these ordinances? Because that's what keeps this whole underground econ, underground workforce working, and it just perpetuates stuff and impacts, you know, the, it goes from there and it, these are people that end up working over here that do things on the weekend and stuff.
I, I agree with you on that, Mayor. Some of these smaller companies, they do grow and eventually start building bigger, bigger projects. If the City of Hawthorne has the resources to, to implement this throughout all projects, why not? Why not? Like you said, if, if folks are, if our community is being exploited and not being paid their correct wages, hey, there's, there should be something to slow these contractors down. I agree with you 100%.
And then the only reason I'm asking is if you have that information already, then, you know, what's good paso?
So, one of the, one of the small, smaller setbacks is, I'll give you an example. We turn in information to different state agencies from workers that have come forward and gave us all the information, say, hey, this is how many weeks I'm owed, this is who the contractor is. Unfortunately, because of the workload, it takes a long time for them to, to get to that, some of those cases. So they do choose the bigger cases. We just had a situation where workers from a company were paid seven and a half million dollars for, for the workers not taking their lunch breaks, not being paid their overtime, being owed their wages. And those are the bigger cases that they absolutely go after. But unfortunately, we don't have the resources, they don't have the resources to go after every individual case. But I can tell you, it is heartbreaking when you see families, construction workers who haven't been paid in five weeks. And one of those cases was actually leading up to Christmas. If, if you're leading up to Christmas and you're not paid for five weeks before that, you can just imagine what that family is going through. I'm happy to say that because of their involvement, of the representatives that are, some of them are with me here today. We came back in January to that job site, and initially, these workers were a little afraid of us because, you know, they didn't know who we were. When we came back in January, they, they welcomed us with open arms. I was trying to figure out what changed, because we were still working on helping them getting paid, right, from the contractor. They said, hey, man, thanks for you guys getting involved and all the pressure that you guys put on our contract, on our employer. He goes, we all got paid right before Christmas for those five weeks that we were owed. So yes, we make a difference when, when we can, but we could definitely use our, our city's help in a, in a fight.
And I'm also a firm believer that if you, you end up building cheap, you end up building twice and end up paying more. So I'm a firm believer in that, right? Any questions? We're good?
Yeah, thank you very much. If you guys want to build those parking structures and you want to build that metro, I have a lot of carpenters that live in the community that'll be happy to build that for you all. Well, thank you again.
Thank you, ladies and gents. Thank you. I mean, I've seen it in my, you know, I've seen it with, in our households, man, so it's like, don't even. And I used to tell my mom, don't do it. Just get over, you know, don't do that. Then they, they, then they, they ask you for the money upfront for the supplies and, and what they, you know, they do half, uh, half, half job and then they disappear, right, so whatever.
We need to get you some responsible contractors, Mayor.
All right. Thank you, guys and gals. Oral communications guidelines.
Pursuant to government code section 549.
Yeah, we just, wait. Yeah, let's wait. But, um, we're still live though. We're just still live, but we're, um, we're just silent right now until we get a call, uh. We're still live though, so just for the message for the people downstairs. Is that what you want to do? ever just, ever just read your stuff? Okay. How long is that gonna happen? All right.
I, I can ensure you, Mayor, that, um, the turn on, uh, off and on for the meetings, it's not a wait. So if you wanna close the meeting, we can open it right up on a recess.
Okay, we're, we're temporarily recessed and we'll be back online in two or three, four minutes. Okay? Thank you.
Eric and Captain Chris were fabulous because we had someone that came there in their car selling fireworks that were from, you know, illegal, yes. And they took care of it and because they were taking customers away from us, you know, so and I appreciate them very much. There were a few things that took place, the motorcycle thing and the car thing each day and they took care of all that and I'm thankful for that. Two, our backpacks were given away on Friday, this Friday, and thanks to our city clerk, she was able to get one of her friends to donate 100 backpacks and half of them were supplies. So I'm thankful for that and that's happening this Friday at 9:00 a.m. at Corn Blume Elementary School. We'll be giving out 200 backpacks with supplies. And then September 29th is our golf tournament and I'm hoping everyone will be able to sponsor our event. It looks like hopefully it's going to be one of the best we've had. We're giving out a plane fare to San Francisco with a stay at the Marriott and then Ayers Hotels giving us a weekend and so many other gifts that we're having for door prizes. So I'm thanking everyone for that. Also, we have a lot of new chamber members and two of them came this evening and I'm going to have them come up one at a time and tell you a quick minute about their business. So we'll have Chris come up first and she owns Soft Cafe and she's a new chamber member.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm glad to be here. I represent Soft Cafe. It is family-owned, women-operated business in the heart of Hawthorne. We offer our customers not only coffee, but we try to be more than the coffee shop. We try to connect people together. We try to be the place where families have their quality time. We try to be a place where neighbors and colleagues connect to each other. So I really hope to see all of you there and I really hope that we can be a nice place for Hawthorne and bring some useful things to the city. Thank you for having us.
Just a second. Do you guys have Wi-Fi?
We do have Wi-Fi. We are kid-friendly. We have high chairs for kids. We're happy to see families and also we give free Wi-Fi because we have a lot of students and freelancers to come over to us to study and work.
Address, please.
It is 12947 Hawthorne Boulevard, just two blocks away from here.
Thank you very much.
And they have amazing croissant salmon sandwiches.
All of their food is very good.
That was my favorite.
Excellent. And now I have someone else. Her name is Patricia and she and her husband own Tapville and that's across from SpaceX. And they're new chamber members.
Okay. Hello, good evening. My name is Patricia Leck. It's a pleasure to be here. Thank you for having me. So my husband and I, we own Tapville, which is located at 12520 on Crenshaw, right across from SpaceX, at the bottom of the Arrow condo building, right on the corner. And what's unique about our restaurant is that we offer 30 self-pour beer taps that we offer a variety of craft beers. We have beers from the local breweries as well, so we support them. If you're not a big beer drinker, we offer a variety of seasonal cocktail flights and mocktail flights as well if you do not drink alcohol at all. We have a full-service bar as well as a full kitchen led by our executive chef, Carlos Osario. We offer shareable bites, a lot of handheld burgers, tacos, things for kids. We're very family-friendly. We have a great outdoor space, perfect for private events and parties, and we're just excited to be a part of the Hawthorne community. It's a great place for friends, neighbors, colleagues and coworkers to get together to connect over food and drinks. We offer happy hour Monday through Friday and we're open seven days a week.
Seven days?
Yes.
Wow, okay. Didn't know that.
Okay. Yes. As of right now, our hours Monday through Friday are from 3:00 to 9:00 and the majority of the day on the weekend.
What about parking?
Parking. So parking is a little bit tricky since we can't park on Crenshaw. You can park at the Arrow parking lot located under their condo building and it's validated free parking.
Okay.
Thank you. So it's just a short walk over. I know it's not ideal. We're trying to kind of fix that situation and so if anyone has any suggestions or comments, we would love to hear them.
Oh, I mean, you know, I wish you great success. Unfortunately, the parking situation with such awful planning and design, I mean, I think that's something I saw, but I guess, let's see what solution you can find.
The ambiance is nice. Yeah, we went there, Montero, myself. We did a grand opening, tried some of the beer, tried some of the food. It was nice. Met your husband, so thank you. Thank you for coming.
You're welcome. Thank you so much.
When do I get a similar invite?
You're welcome anytime. Please come on by. We hope to see all of you there.
Yeah, Johnny, we'll take Johnny with us.
Thank you so much. Welcome. Thank you, Patricia. All right, I have a, I have another request to talk, but they didn't put their name on, so I don't know who to call up. So that person can come up during general communication. Okay, so no more cards. Anybody wishing to speak, please form a line. That was you?
That's regarding the petition, speaking about parking.
Yeah, so, yeah, go ahead, ma'am.
Good evening, City Council. I'm addressing two parking issues. Can you hear me well?
Yes, we can.
First, I'm presenting a signed neighborhood petition requesting to repeal Resolution 7742 passed back in 2015, which awarded preferential permitted parking to only five signed petitioning residents for the block of 122nd Street between Menlo and Freeman Avenue. Yet, there are only two residences technically addressed along the 122nd Street block of the northeast neighborhood. After careful observation of the current circumstances surrounding the permitted block, neighbors believe that this continued enforcement is no longer justified for the following reasons. Number one, public street. The entire 122nd block has 22 parking spaces that restricts fair public parking access for surrounding neighbors. Also, the awarded permitted addresses have ample parking of their own, like garages plus multiple car parking driveway spaces. And again, there are only two residences addressed to this permitted block. Number two, underutilization. The block in question is often empty with minimal activity throughout the day and ample parking available. This underutilization indicates that the restrictions imposed by the old 2015 resolution are unnecessary and no longer serve the intended purpose of managing parking congestion. Number three, impact. This parking restriction exacerbates the parking situation for those living nearby. Residents that rely on street parking often have to park one to three blocks away from their home. This has caused distress and paranoia on street sweeping days as many have been towed and ticketed multiple times. Number four, time passed. Given that this resolution was enacted 10 years ago, it is essential to reassess its relevance in light of current conditions. The community has evolved and the original reasons for the resolution simply no longer apply. For the second parking issue, residents present an ongoing citywide online signed petition running on change.org called No Paid Parking in Hawthorne, urging to cancel the metered paid parking pilot program introduced by Hawthorne Public Works. The concerned residents of Hawthorne do not consent to any implementation of metered parking anywhere in the public streets or lots of Hawthorne. Residents of Hawthorne request that the pilot program, including in the city-wide study to install metered parking, be stopped and ceased from being carried forward. We do not consent for any collected city funds to be budgeted toward the installation of meters or any type of such paid parking in Hawthorne. Let's work towards alternative solutions that do not penalize our own residents any further. Please consider parking solution options such as de-permitting all residential public streets of Hawthorne or allocating the no-parking residential streets into useful parking spaces during street sweeping days as a more resident-friendly approach. Thank you for attending, for your attention to these matters. I look forward to your favorable consideration to repeal Resolution 7742 and that the city sees a paid metered parking proposal that Hawthorne residents do not consent to. Thank you. And I emailed you guys about it. The city clerk has all information.
Ma'am, thank you for assembling that information. A lot of times people come up here and say, "Do something about it." But you did your research, you got your information together and you're presenting worthwhile, very good arguments on some of these things. So we'll take a look at the information, city manager and I. I'll have him just take a look at the data and everything that you've given him, okay?
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you for coming for us.
Mayor Vargas and city council and staff, my name is Carol Maston. I'm a resident of Hawthorne. I come before you in the capacity of a senior citizen commissioner. I just wanted you guys to know that Dr. Jackson, Joseph Jackson, passed away and I was just wanting you to perhaps close the meeting out in his memory. We received information last week that Dr. Jackson had passed away, so if everyone just could keep Ms. Jackson in your prayers and your thoughts. And that's what I wanted to say tonight. Dr. Jackson was a longtime senior citizen commissioner. That's where I met him. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am, and he'll be missed very much.
I don't have any information on the service or anything yet.
If you do, if you do happen to get that information, just relay it to us, please, ma'am. Thank you. Next person, please.
Good afternoon, mayor, council members and neighbors, city manager, everyone. Lellie Fernandez here. One, I agree with the paid parking meters, but I guess that's a pilot program on the main streets, which is totally out of the residential areas. However, I am for the permit parking as a homeowner and I'm not sure if she's for it or not, but yeah, the best for all the residents is going to have to be looked into. But that's not what I'm here for. I am here tonight on behalf of Gordon Miegel. Many of you know Gordon. He has spent years driving around to deliver pamphlets, city news and information to our residents and to all of us up here, to our homes or to our offices. He has been a constant advocate, helping people stay informed and connected. The truth is Gordon has helped each and every one of us and you in this chamber in one way or another, whether by making sure your words, your decisions and your efforts reach the community. He has supported this city and its leaders without ever asking for anything in return. This neighbor has lived in Hawthorne for a little more than five decades. He is our very own. He is not an outsider. Gordon has a deep invested interest in this city because Hawthorne is his home. But today Gordon needs us. His car is broken down and on a fixed income, things are harder than anything. He cannot afford the repairs. Yet even though Gordon continues walking door-to-door to serve his community, I started a GoFundMe for Gordon to help him to get back on the road. Some neighbors have already donated and I want to thank them sincerely. This is our chance to join them, to give back to someone who has already given so much to us. The city of Hawthorne is proudly known as the city of good neighbors. Tonight, I ask that we live up to that name. Let's come together as neighbors and leaders to support Gordon in his time of need. I brought copies of the flyer with the GoFundMe link and QR code. Please take one with you tonight and consider helping Gordon. Let's make a difference. Let's show Gordon what he has always shown us, that in Hawthorne, we take care of each other. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, ma'am. Next person, please.
Yeah, good evening. Update that I've been telling people lately, for most of you have not noticed, I've been broadcasting it. I'm cancer-free. My prostate is gone. It went from a 7.8 to a 2, so I'm still cancer-free.
Very happy to hear that. That's a good thing. All right, anybody else? If not, we have a full agenda, so the oral communication is ended? All right, we have a, we had a lengthy first part, so let's just move on to the city clerk's consent calendar.
Mr. Mayor, I have eight items on the consent calendar. Item 6 through 13 for your consideration and approval. Item 6, approval of the city council meeting minutes for the regular city council meetings of May 13th, 2025, May 27th, 2025, June 24th, 2025, and the special meeting of June 24th, 2025. Item 7, the city treasurer requests approval of the warrants. Item 8, approval of waiver of full readings of resolutions and ordinances on Tuesdays, August 26th, 2025's agenda. Item 9, Resolution Number 8548, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, authorizing the submittal of an application acceptance of allocation of funds and execution of a grant agreement with the Federal Aviation Administration, the FAA, for an airport infrastructure grant, AIG, for the resurfaced runway 725 and resurfaced taxiways and trench drain extension project 3-06-0101-024-2025, and authorizing and ratifying the director of public works' execution of grant documents. Item 10, Resolution 8549, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, declaring pursuant to government code section 54221B and 54221F1F, that real property owned by the city located immediately south of 14115 Quateri Avenue in the city is not necessary for the city's use and is exempt surplus land, making a finding that such declaration is exempt from the California Environmental Equality Act and taking related actions. Resolution Number 8550, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, approving and authorizing an environmental preferable purchasing policy, EPPP, for the city of Hawthorne. Resolution Number 8551, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, approving a consultant agreement for active transportation plan with General Technologies and Solutions. Item 13, Resolution Number 8553, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, authorizing the digitization and destruction of certain city clerk records pursuant to government code 34090 and Resolution Number 71704 adoption.
I move.
Second.
Please vote.
Who's second?
The second is going to be given to the mayor, please vote.
The voting reflects mayor and council voting yes.
There are no ordinances on tonight's agenda. Our next agenda item is a bid opening. Item 14, Ms. Madam Clerk.
Now is the time and place to declare publicly received sealed bids for Eucalyptus Park and Ramona Park Improvement Project, project number 24-07. There were four bids received, all were accompanied by bidder's bonds. The prices are as follows. Martinez Landscape Company Incorporated, $2,658,173. Doja Incorporated, $3,683,810. S&amp;H Construction, $2,868,600. Classic Engineering and Construction, $4,731,185.
I make a motion that this gets referred over to staff for study and recommendation.
Second.
Please vote.
The votes are in. Voter reflects mayor and council voting yes.
Thank you, city council. Now we're, so we just did, what did I just do? 15?
Public hearing?
Oh, yeah, we're the, there's no public hearing, so we'll skip that, but we'll move on to general matters. It's just that these are so brief, so we're just skipping, hopping around. General matters, can you read it, please?
Item 15, First Amendment to the Consultant Agreement between Chargie LLC and the city of Hawthorne for Electric Vehicle Charging Stations Design and Installation Services. Recommended motion, staff recommends that the city council approve the amendment and authorize the director of public works to enter into the, enter into the First Amendment with Chargie LLC.
For discussion?
Go ahead.
Thank you. I just want to know, are these going to be new charging stations at the new facilities that we've got in the pipelines? Where the, where would these be?
Yes, it includes the new facilities and some of our parks. So Jim Thorpe Memorial Center, Holly Glen, to name a few. So it encompasses the new projects and some of our remodels of our current facilities that we have.
Great, thank you. I'll go ahead and move.
Second.
Please vote. Please vote.
The votes are in. Voter reflects mayor and council voting yes.
Thank you, city council. City manager's consent calendar, Madam Clerk, please.
Item 16, letter of agreement by and between the city of Hawthorne and Space Exploration Technologies Corporation, SpaceX, to seek a traffic study to determine the feasibility of installing crosswalk improvements on Jack Northrop Avenue. Item 17, Second Amendment to the Consultant Agreement for Survey Services, Second Amendment between the city of Hawthorne, city, and DRC Engineering and Incorporated Consultant. Item 18, Second Amendment to the Consultant Agreement for Construction Administration and Construction Observation Services, Second Amendment between the city of Hawthorne, city, and CNS Engineering Consultant. Item 19, Agreement between the city of Hawthorne and RSG Incorporated in the amount of $29,870. Item 20, Agreement between the city of Hawthorne and Ryell and Letson in the amount of $27,500. Item 21, City of Hawthorne's investment report for the quarter ended June 30th, 2025. Item 22, Recurring Software and Services Agreement with MRI Real Estate Software LLC, MRI, for Housing Data Services. Item 23, Progress Payment Number 6 in the amount of $530,226.67 due to PNC III Incorporated of Los Alamos, California, for the city of Hawthorne's New Senior Center, project number 24-03. Item 24, Award of Contract for Eucalyptus Park and Ramona Park Improvement Project, number 24-07. Item 25, Approval of an Agreement between the Hawthorne Police Department and the Hawthorne School District for the Provision of a School Resource Officer, SRO. Item 26, Approval of an Agreement between the Hawthorne Police Department and the Sentinel Valley Union High School District for the Provision of a School Resource Officer.
Just, I'll respect that right now, just let me.
Item 27?
Oh, yeah, read that.
Yeah, she's still going.
What do you want?
She's still going.
Go ahead, ma'am.
She hasn't finished, we've got till 32.
Just tuck that away.
Oh, I don't have that on my.
Go ahead, keep reading.
Item 27, Side Letter of Agreement between the city of Hawthorne and Hawthorne Police Management Supervisory Group, HPMSG, Retention Pay Amendment. Item 28, Progress Payment Number 3 in the amount of $2,616,046.93 is due to Martinez Landscape Company Incorporated of Silmar, California, for the city of Hawthorne New City Yard, project 24-02. Item 29, Third Amendment to the Memorandum of Understanding Between the South Bay Cities' Council of Governments and the city of Hawthorne Regarding the Use of Allocated County Local Solutions Grant Funds to Implement the City's Los Angeles Centers for Alcohol and Drug Abuse, LACADA, project. Item 30, Progress Payment Number 9 and 10 in the amount of $1,920,699.58 due to Classic Engineering and Construction Incorporated of Orange, California, for Hawthorne Housing Rehabilitation of City-Owned Properties 2023, project number 23-09. Item 31, FEMA Project D Obligations, COVID-19 Pandemic Response. And item 22, Final Acceptance of the First Contract Term and Award of the Street Tree Tremming Contract Extension to North Star Landscape of Downey, California, for Street Tree Tremming Project, City Project 22-07. Mr. Mayor, that concludes the city manager's consent calendar. May I have a motion to approve items 16 through 32?
Well, first of all, would you like a little water?
I know, right? That's a lot.
Discussion, I got discussion on 16, 22 and 24.
To the chair also, can you just make mention, city clerk, it's item 32, there was a 22 mentioned.
32? Sorry, everybody.
Well, yeah, that's true, for the record, right?
For the record, it's 32.
Okay, 16, 22, 24, we'll have discussion.
Which ones?
16, 22 and 24.
Are you pulling, you're pulling items now? Can I go ahead and give you mine?
16, right?
Yeah, what did you say, 16 and what?
16, 22 and 24.
And 31.
Oh, and 31 too?
Thank you.
Okay, let's see. So I make a motion on, I make a motion on 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 23, 25, 26, 27, 28, 29, 30 and 32.
So move.
Please vote.
Second.
Please vote.
The votes are in. Voter reflects mayor and council voting yes.
Discussion on 16, go ahead.
Thank you. Hey, Vaughn, I think it's with you or I hope. A letter of agreement with SpaceX. Is it like a partnership that's 50/50? How are we, how are we doing that? I know there's a, installing a crosswalk improvements on Jack Northrop Avenue.
So right now it's just the feasibility. So SpaceX has come to the city and asked us due to their employees commuting back and forth walking, if it would be possible to put a crossing area there. Staff feels at this point that we feel it wouldn't be a safe proposition to put there. We're looking for a third opinion, so we're asking permission and direction from council to allow us to go out and, and go out and get a second opinion on if this is feasible or not.
Is that on Prairie? At the start of Jack North, uh, Jack Northrop? Or is it going to be on Jack Northrop?
On Jack North.
Okay, okay. And then city attorney, considering that I live on the railroad, literally, I live on the railroad, would I be able to vote on this?
Um, I don't know, what's the distance?
Across the street?
Yeah, no, you.
I'm on Prairie, I'm on Prairie in York. I'm on New York, right across the street from Costco. Now everybody knows where I live. Don't come haunt me, don't come.
Oh, in the Costco Business District.
What's that?
She's within 500, man.
Costco Business Center, right? Okay.
She's within 500, man.
Is it within 500 feet?
You are.
Am I?
Almost for sure.
Okay.
I don't, I don't, I really don't think there is a conflict because this isn't approving a, a crosswalk, it's just approving a study to be done, a feasibility study to be done. So I don't think that really is, you're not voting on approving.
Well, remember Edison had a project in El Segundo, on El Segundo in New York and you were like, oh, good call.
Well, if it's a, it depends what it is. This is just a traffic feasibility.
If I can chime in too, right now I'm looking for approval to use an outside consultant to give the city an opinion. If we do move forward, we will bring this item to council and that's, at that time, excuse me, I can research with Mr. Kim your exact location to the location they're projecting to have the intersection and we can look at the distance.
Thank you, Vaughn. Thank you, city attorney.
Quick question, are they asking for one crosswalk or multiple?
I believe there was two that they're requesting and we're doing feasibility study for.
Where are they asking them at?
Good evening, mayor and council. This is just, we are doing the study for them right now. We're going to hire a consultant to see what is the best way to do the crosswalk.
Where, where along the stretch of?
Jack Northrop between Prairie Avenue all the way to Crenshaw.
No, I know, but they're asking for two of them, like where? Where along the route?
It's roughly in the middle of the, almost like 400 feet from Prairie Avenue, the first intersection, they have the driveway. And if you go move to like 2,000 linear feet to the west, east from Prairie Avenue, they have almost another signal flashing, they want to put it there.
So the, the, the people who are going to be doing the, the, the study, how do we know it's not, are they choosing it or are we choosing it or how are we obtaining that person? So that we can, so that we can guarantee unbiasedness?
The city is doing the study, not SpaceX. The SpaceX is just paying the city.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second. Please vote.
Voter reflects mayor and council voting yes.
22 discussion, discussion, please.
Yes, city manager, I wanted to ask you a couple of questions. I noticed that this agreement is for. I noticed that this agreement is for five years and also I wanted to know, have we used them before and why is the contract for five years?
Good evening, mayor, council members, Kimberly Mack, Director of Housing. This is the main database for the Housing Choice Voucher Program. This database has been in place since before my existence at the city of Hawthorne. So we have used it for at least six years in the time that I've been here and longer. So this program is not something that can be changed often. It is one of the best programs that coordinate with the HUD programs, their computer systems as well to connect us and to report to that agency. And it is important to have an extension of a contract with them because it saves us money. Less years means more money and shorter years gives us a discount.
Okay, thank you.
Move at twenty-two.
Second. Um, it's been moved by Mayor Pro Tem, seconded by Councilwoman Manning. Please vote.
The votes are in. Voter reflects mayor and council voting, yes.
Thank you, folks. All right, discussion on twenty-four. I just want to, the reason I just pulled this is, of course, I'm going to support it, but I just want to highlight the changes that are going to come to Ramona. Who's, who's in charge of this? Mr.?
It's a team effort, mayor, so depending on your, depending on your question, we'll fill that, that answer.
About the, the changes and the improvements?
At which facility?
Let's start, let's start off with Ramona, so the residents can hear because I've, I've received emails and.
Okay.
Well, I can help, I can help you with that answer. Do this, do that, I don't like this, I don't like that.
We're going to do everything there, as we know, as one of our, as we know, that's one of our smaller facilities in the city. So we plan to replace the playground, improve the waiting pool, improve the horseshoe pit area, improve the fitness equipment area, redesign the bathrooms there, and conduct some tree trimming at that park.
Is the, is the horseshoe, is that utilized or underutilized or not utilized? That's a, that's a good question.
We have to survey that. I can't say that as I'm at city hall every day, I'm not sure who's using that, that area, but if city council would like to change something.
This is exciting, by the way, so, I mean, that's why I wanted to highlight it, go ahead, but I still need to finish.
Yeah, the horseshoes actually, it is utilized because there is a group of people goes there on Wednesday to play the horseshoe.
Which one of the beach cities are they from?
Oh, no, they're just, they're from Hawthorne.
Oh, okay. Better be.
And they're members of the Hawthorne Moth Lodge.
Ah, okay, then, that's different, I'm so sorry, I am so sorry.
Here, get my chunk.
What else can you tell, what else can you tell us about Ramona from your perspective?
Um, pretty much everything Vaughn mentioned, it's just replacing the playground equipment. We're going to restripe the basketball court and renovate the restrooms.
Um, the structure, the, the surface of the basketball court, is, that's, that's already been changed out or is it going to be?
Yeah, but the, seems like the court is peeling, so we're going to restripe it.
Wow, look at that, okay.
To the chair.
Yeah, no, keep asking questions, guys, I just want to make sure everybody knows what's going on, go ahead.
Yeah, because I had, I had, I had some questions from residents, too.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
At, at one point, we thought we were going to be having a park in two thousand twenty-six, but it looks like it's been extended, right?
Right. We made a decision internally to let the kids play this summer.
Yeah.
We wanted to have all our parks open and available to North Hawthorne. So with that being said, that delayed the project three months, as you know, this item is for, to go out to bid.
Right.
So once we, staff studies a bids and selects a vendor, we'll start the project right away.
So are the, so are the parks being utilized considering that they're under construction?
No, this park especially, once this park is under construction, no part of the park will be able to.
So Ramona Park is not being utilized?
No, right, right now it's being utilized, yes, but once we start the project, there will be no usage of the facility.
Can we just make sure that it's fully, uh, uh, full with products that's needed in the restrooms and things like this?
Absolutely.
That's important, I think all parks, and I, and I'm so glad that these parks have doors now, right? But I'm glad that you're addressing the park and it's, the park's on the agenda because, you know, we're, I'm not Superwoman, you're not Superman, and there's obviously a lot of pointing fingers, you know? I just want to make sure that we're keeping the community at large, knowing exactly what's happening. So I know they could go at any given time onto our website and look up the status of the park, the status of the revitalizations of the park, project, park, the park projects, et cetera, et cetera. So it's very important that community does, do that because oftentimes, we don't know sometimes if there's been a change order unless it comes to the council and then there's the delay, right? And we're kind of finding out at that point why there's a delay. But thank you, Vaughn, I know you've been very strong about our parks and so has our park staff and I appreciate just keeping the community at large, knowing exactly what's happening with their park based off of where they live.
And if I can add one thing, for those that know about construction or ever done remodeling at your home, the way that we're able to get most of these projects done is that internally we're project managing the project. We have the best public works director in the country, Akbar Faroki, here, and he only has so many hands and so many hats he can wear. If the residents are watching, we have tons of capital projects going on in the city. Only have one public works director and two engineers, Selena Akua and DJ. With that being said, they can only juggle so many projects. If we were to go out externally and have someone project manage it, that would cut down on the amenities that we would have at these parks. So I would just ask the community bear with us, follow us on social media, follow our press releases as we continue to inform the community of projects in the city.
And be patient.
Yes, as the mayor said, do it right the first time.
Right? Thank you.
And then if quantitatively, if quantitatively you want to answer a question about Eucalyptus as far as the improvements?
What happened, oh, no, yeah, I'm going to go on to other stuff, like for sure. All right, thank you, and actually, that's why I'm bringing it up because the thing, I don't know why, I've been using, I've been getting these emails, messages from the community and. Yeah, so this is great that this is happening. So let's, so, so let me write something down, the lights. Okay, so the, can you kind of describe the, there's going to be some improvements on the, on the bathrooms?
Eucalyptus or Ramona? Which park?
Something that'll be for both, or is it just common or is it different?
Uh, Kwanah.
The improvements, other ba, other bathroom. Where are you going, Kwanah, stay at the mic, please.
Kwanah is getting her exercise tonight.
She actually has notes, so she can give you a more detailed scope of work.
But since, you know, I, I've been seeing the, the eucalyptus ones and, and the Ramona one. Talk to me about what kind of improvements, what's going to be different and nicer about this?
So they're going to be ADA compliant.
Okay.
They're going to, actually, eucalyptus is pretty much up to date. They're just going to go in and paint, refurbish the floors. I think they have to replace the couple of toilets and a couple of sinks.
So you know how like we have a little, the water kind of goes down, you can wash it down, hose it down, and it kind of goes down in the drainage? The drainage? We make sure we take a look at that?
We'll do.
I think maybe some of our other facilities too, so we could approve that. Things shift, right? Earthquakes and building shifts, sink, and things get like out of alignment, so, okay, just please stay there, just please stay there, don't go anywhere.
Okay.
All right, this is good, I like that. So moving on to Eucalyptus Park. Take pictures?
No, plunger, you need a plunger. Nothing, go ahead.
Plunger.
I don't need a plunger when I go to the park. It works.
I'm messing with you, go ahead.
Yeah, I know, but okay, I had to say, these guys, these ladies, you know, she, come on, all right. So there's, there's going to be a new soccer field, is that coming up on the eucalyptus too?
Yes, so Eucalyptus, the project, we're going to replace the playground equipment there as well. There's going to be a mini soccer field and there's going to be a solar powered scoreboard.
Solar powered scoreboard, this is beautiful. And yes, I did hear about the water and how it's going to go down and, you know, just sink, and it's not going to be stagnant because sometimes when, what we have right now is, it doesn't happen often, but when it does, it's kind of annoying, water just stays there, gets kind of muddy, you know, but.
Yeah, they're going to redo the field completely, so that should not happen again.
Is it going to be one soccer field or how many?
One soccer field, yes.
Okay, so I'll be able to take on Ruben Sanchez, one-on-one soccer dribbling?
Yeah.
Because he says he's a soccer pro, where is he actually? Oh, there he is. All right.
Mayor, if I can add in one additional things with the soccer field, we're going to have fencing around it, so I think Kwanah is about five to six feet of fencing around the field.
Okay.
So that'll help us maintain the integrity of the field and we'll be able to use it and permitting the filled out.
All right, usage. And you know how I feel about the usage of that thing?
Absolutely.
Of anything that's Hawthorne. The lights, I mean, I know there's, at both Ramona and Eucalyptus and other, well, at least these are the ones that have been done right now, there's lights and they're solar powered, am I correct? They're solar powered and in the evening they light up. When all the rest of the lights come on, these kind of stay on or something, is that correct?
Throughout the park, yes.
Okay, so the, the frequency of the, Akbar, whoever's going to be doing the design, the frequency of the lights, we might need to add a couple more lights over there at the Eucalyptus one, just to make sure that there's no areas where any ladies or gents that decide to walk at night, because this is, you know, I know that they might be closed, but we don't want there to be a problem where somebody gets attacked or, or somebody, some nut tries to do something here in the city. Hasn't happened. The frequency of them, how co, how often? If we could maybe squeeze in a couple just to make sure that the walking path at least is, has some subdued light there, right?
Okay, sounds good.
And then the usage of these fields also, I know there's a lot of soccer teams from outside of our city that want to use this and just come and use it, but we need to give priority to Hawthorne residents first, Hawthorne teams and groups, okay? So I'm still one hundred percent about that.
Okay, got it.
So, okay, I hope I have your support.
You did.
Kwanah?
You did.
Okay, okay, okay. All right, all right. I make a motion?
Second.
Please vote.
And they will have cameras.
Oh, yeah.
The votes are in.
They've been having.
Voter reflects mayor and council voting, yes.
Thank you, folks.
Yes.
FEMA Project Thirty-One.
Thank you. What does de-obligation mean?
Um, I can start with the answers, if you need additional information, Akbar can help me out. As we know, two thousand twenty, we were, we had a pandemic, COVID was here. The federal government allowed cities and government agencies to fund certain items. As the city of Hawthorne being very progressive, we submitted items that were audited that did not qualify for reimbursement. So what we're asking is to, or what we're requesting is to have permission to refund, I think it's just a little bit under twenty-eight, twenty-nine thousand dollars back to FEMA for items that did not qualify for reimbursement.
Okay, I move.
Second, please vote, folks.
The votes are in. Voter reflects mayor and council voting, yes.
Our city attorney's a consent calendar, please.
Item thirty-three, claim for monetary damages by the independent city's risk management authority, ICRMA. Recommended motion, staff recommends that the city council deny the claim by ICRMA. Item thirty-four, claim for bodily injury by Luisa Magante. Recommended motion, staff recommends that the city council deny the claim by Luisa Magante. Item thirty-five, additional funding request for administration receivership account in the amount of thirty thousand dollars for the past fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five. Recommended motion, staff recommends that the city council approve the additional funding and approve the increase of blanket purchase order for Civica Law Group to reflect the increase, the amount of thirty thousand dollars to administration receivership account, receivership number one zero zero dash one five zero one zero 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 dash four zero seven four four for fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five. Incumbre for the same and approve the increase of blanket purchase order for Civica Law Group to reflect the increase. Item thirty-six, claim for bodily injury by Shanta Whiting. Recommended motion, staff recommends that the city council deny the claim by Shanta Whiting.
I move. Okay, please, please vote. Yeah, I was missing.
The votes are in. Voter reflects mayor and council voting, yes.
Thank you, guys. I'm going to ask you to do, Angie, number thirty-eight, discussion thirty-eight.
Yes.
We'll do thirty-seven second.
Okay. You want me to go to thirty-eight?
In commemoration of the city of Hawthorne.
Oh, yes, yes, I'm sorry, yes, I had two items. I think it was in February, I'm not, I couldn't, I can't remember, but we should have did this, we should have done this sooner. The city was recognized for efforts on their efficiency, energy efficient, efficiency, and we were honored in the city of Gardena with the COG, the South Bay COG, and they presented us a certificate of recognition. And so I'm instructing and providing direction to staff to assure that we have the decals, leveraging that in every, every building that we have and buildings that are in the, on the pipelines to show that we're energy efficient buildings. And this is similar to government agencies' buildings throughout our country, similar to those that are provide, providing ways to be more green energy. And so thank you so much to all of our Department of Public Works, all of our engineers and all of those that apply for grants and apply efforts to the COG and our Clean Power Alliance, council member Montero, who recently, we all know, our, our city is now a hundred percent renewable energy, which is a pretty big thing for our little Hawthorne. And so I just want to make sure that the decals are something that could be displayed in our business, excuse me, our facilities, in our buildings, something similar to, I have a picture here. Some of them are a little bit different in Washington DC on their buildings, and so it's going to be great to know that you're walking into a building that is more green and more energy efficient. So thank you and kudos to all of those that made efforts to assure that we had an application and we were recognized, so thank you.
So the, the decal starts to be placed when, now immediately?
Uh, yeah, they could be displayed in our city buildings. I mean, we, we're going to have a new city hall, we're going to have a new senior center, we're going to have a new public works yard, and maybe how better to have, you know, this, those distinctions on the buildings to show that we're energy efficient and proud of that. But we're going to come up with a decal that's going to be suitable, and who's to say maybe we need to do a decal chief and departments that show our Olympic twenty twenty-eight efforts also? So we could maybe mirror that and somehow come up with a great decal for our energy efficiency. So thank you. Yeah.
I concur.
Okay. Thank you.
Item number thirty-seven now, please.
Yes, item number thirty-seven. Similar to other government agencies, our California Legislature, our schools, you know, usually we have what they call recess, where there's a time that agencies close for the summer so that folks can go and have, you know, vacation, spend quality time away from work to do the things that families do and those individuals that like to travel abroad. Oftentimes, our city in the city of Hawthorne, we have city council meetings every second and fourth Tuesday of the month. So if you really want to get away or do something, you have to be sure to get back to council so that you could be here and present. And quite oftentimes, we're having to make meetings and meet with our department heads to assure that our items are placed on the agenda, that certain items are vetted and we're looking into, you know, language and things like this. There's a lot of work that goes into the agenda, it's just not typing up, you know, a word or a sentence. There's a lot to it, and oftentimes, council members are the ones that are making those decisions on what goes on an agenda and how to make that happen. So I was suggesting as a body, a government body, a government agency, that we consider a recess during the summer, which would take away us having to rush back for city council that we consider a recess during the summer, which would take away, um, us having to rush back for city council meetings. Whether it be taken away, uh, the last Tuesday, the fourth Tuesday in July, or having to take away, say, say for instance, um, the last, uh, city council meeting in August. And so it, that's kind of the, the recommendation suggestion, because as we know, we have warrants that need to be approved and have to be placed on the agenda. And those are things that are immediate, because when we approve warrants, people get paid. Uh, when warrants are not paid, well, you know how that goes. So I wanna make sure I'm not disrupting and interrupting the work of, uh, our city government. I wanna assure that there's transparency when it comes to community knowing when we are on city council and when we're off on city council, which would include a recess. So I wanna make sure that the language that we're using is right and reflective, and this includes, you know, going dark, usually. Like say for instance, um, Katrina Manning and myself, council member Manning and myself, sit at LAX Lawa, not Lawa, but LAX Advisory. We're dark for the whole month of August. There's no meetings in August. So, uh, you know, if there wasn't other meetings that I had, obviously, I could go and take a vacation and know that I don't have a meeting until September, right? The first or second week in September. So that's kind of the recommendation, yeah. And I wanted to just bring this to the council and bring your thoughts.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. City Manager, are you aware of any other cities, um, to your city manager associations, uh, association with other city managers of other cities that do this? I know Gardena does this. They take actually two months, but.
Yes, um, we're one of the few cities that do not take a break. Most cities take a month, some cities do, as Councilwoman Reyes English mentioned, the last meeting in July, first meeting in August. So if council would like, uh, staff to look into this, to see if business would not be interrupted with missing any meetings, we can possibly bring something back at the next meeting with a recommendation on what would be the optimal time to have a recess, or I can take direction per, uh, Councilwoman Reyes discussion.
So let me, let me ask you this. Uh, what I've noticed traditionally over the times that we've been here is that there, there's some individuals who need to go off for reunions with family, with, you know, doing certain things. And, uh, so, uh, and you saw the item that was here, so you must have some initial gut feeling or, or idea of as of this. I'd like to add the, the second meeting in, of July and the two meetings in August as an ample opportunity for a sufficient amount of break. That gives us the first meeting in July to be here present for any Fourth of July separation, celebrations we have, et cetera. And, um, if for those who are able to stay that portion, but the second meeting in July and the two meetings in August, if that's okay with my council colleagues.
So you're asking to keep the two meetings in August?
Take the the second off, second Jul-, second meeting in July and the two meetings in August.
Oh, so three meetings? Okay.
Which is, uh.
Going dark in August.
On average.
And Mr. Mayor, what I've seen, you know, in this case is that, uh, if a meeting is needed, the, uh, city council will call for a special meeting.
And those who are available, address it.
I, and, and thank you for, you know, some of the things that, uh, were noted, um, from, from staff. The pros and cons on this. Um, some of the, the pros that were suggested was there would be a staffing council recharge, which oftentimes, you know, I, I haven't been gone since January, since my brother died, so I haven't gone anywhere. I've been here. Um, but that's just an example. I'm not trying to say I'm not, you know, wanting to get away from work. Scheduling efficiency, uh, resource, uh, savings, which avoids, avoids holding meetings and, uh, with light agendas, preserving staff time and resources. It also would have, help staff when they wanna take off, that would, you know, they would know when they would be able to do that, right, without interruption. Uh, predictability, which establishes a clear annual schedule for residents and, uh, the community and stakeholders. Uh, regional consistency, which aligns with practices of other local government agencies, and I named some, some. The legislature, other municipalities, um, other organizations that are a government agency. And then there's cons. I wanna make sure we, we discuss this.
I think we gotta comment this, we gotta comment from Mayor Pro-Tip. Let's, let's, let's move on to, you, you, I think you've kinda made a lot of points.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do, I do agree, because, uh, like, uh, Councilwoman English mentioned, like, for example, in August, uh, I do not have to attend the Clean Power Alliance Board of Directors meetings. The sanitation district meeting is also dark in the month of August. So most of those meetings, uh, and, most of those agency take the month of August off. So I do agree with the mayor, so we can have, uh, one meeting in July and then, uh, cancel all the others until September. So I agree with it.
Can we just go ahead and make a motion at this point?
Okay, can I make a motion?
You, you, you're the lead, go ahead.
Okay, I make a motion. For, for, this is gonna be for staff to do a feasibility, a, 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 just like you said.
But.
Uh, right, to do a feasibility, a study.
It depends. Um, Mayor, Mayor was saying three meetings, three meetings off.
The, the last in, uh, July and then the two in August.
Yeah, would you like me to look into that, or we?
I think we're ready to.
Are we good?
You're, you're, look, this is, this has been an issue for a while.
Okay.
Um, and this has been talked about, this has been talked about through years with the community too, because, you know.
And this may.
Feedback from the communities.
It may require amendment of an ordinance, so let me look into that as well.
Okay.
The amendment to the ordinance could follow, but that's, that's the city council's desire.
And one, there are a couple of ish, um, items that if it comes up, that requires an approval during regular meeting. That would be such things as ordinance, employment agreement, things of that nature. So there are by government code, um, certain measures that require to be heard during and decided during regular meetings, so.
And the warrants, right? Ensure that the warrants are.
Warrants could be done by a special meeting as well. So if we need to, we could set special meeting during these, um, month and a half.
It'll be a sweet spot where we can get people together.
Things like ordinance, you can't, you just have to wait until we have regular meeting.
Okay, all right, great.
Mister, Mr. City Attorney, did you know that?
Is there a second?
There might be some meeting, so you'll, you'll be able to benefit from this as well. I don't know if you knew that.
I'm just advising you.
Okay, I, I just don't know if you.
Okay, so I made the motion.
I, I second.
Please vote.
Okay.
The votes are in? Voter reflects mayor and council voting, yes, with Katrina Manning voting, no.
Thank you for looking out for us, Mr. City Attorney. I appreciate you very much. Oh, this one is very important for me, uh, for us, the community, and I received emails about this. People concerned in different parts of our community. I received, the most recent one was in Holly Glen. Um, and, uh, people, I've received calls from all the other areas. Um, it's talking about the enforcement of Hawthorne's municipal code section six, 10.60.010 regarding the prohibition of riding bicycles and those dangerous e-bikes on sidewalks. And the concern is, you're gonna get run over, you're gonna get hurt. Everybody, I see people in the audience nodding yes, okay? It's a very deep concern. And I recently heard that other city, I don't know if you guys know, but, you know, I mean, people aren't into doing exercise and doing the right, they're, they're about like, just riding like these things, like they're stunt, stunt, stunt actors or something on their, on their e-bikes and, and the bicycles, they're pretty reckless. Up and down the, you know, the streets. And you got women, uh, mothers with their children in strollers, you know? I mean, the same with between bikes and with e-bikes, you know, and they add even worse with the e-bikes. You know, you don't, you know, this whole thing about, yeah, but I was just cycling and I didn't have it like on motorized, whatever the motorized function, BS, man. You know, it's, it's one and the same. These people using this thing, they could just knock somebody out and kill somebody. So this action that I'm suggesting now is for immediate action, Chief. I don't see you like, like, uh, your, your, your body is kinda faced like, uh, not directly at me, so that's telling me that. I'm just giving you a hard time, uh, because I almost got run over like two or three times, walking down like some of these streets with these e-bikes. And that's awful, I mean, and then I got these calls before that happened to me and then after, and so it's like. We have the laws to, the laws are already set. I discussed this with the city attorney. So we're, we're able to enforce this. No bikes, no e-bikes on the sidewalks. So we just need immediate enforcement. There's none of this give a warning crap. No give a warning crap, because the thing is, you give a warning and these people might be doing it on, on another block on the other side of Hawthorne. And then the accidents start. So I'm proposing, and I would like to see immediate ticketing. Uh, proposing the word? Yeah, good, good.
Can we have discussion?
Oh, we will, we will. I was just proposing it, of course, of course. The, so the immediate ticketing, ticketing, impounding of the, of the e-bikes and bicycles. And, uh, you know, starting noticing, notices, you know, in our, on our social media pages, of course. And a PSA that we could, that could go along with that. We could have just like a static, uh, static notices. And then we could also have PSAs where people end up, people end up hearing about this, okay? So, it's a danger. I've even heard of, I've even heard about e-bike gangs. Kids with these things roaming the streets and just going all over the place. And, you know, it's like, it's crazy. It's gotten to a point where it's like, and you know what? A lot of our cities around us have already addressed this. And you know where it was problematic was like on the, on the, over there on the strands in the beach areas. There was a big controversy about these things over there. People walking or, you know, walking or jogging, and then you got these e-bike, you know, creeps over here, just almost running people over. So I think, and that's on the strand, right? So, the sidewalks are very s- sensitive. So I'm putting it out there, I would love the support of my city council colleagues. Yeah, any comment over here? Chief, do you have anything to add? Mr. City Attorney? We've already talked about it. I don't know, if you don't have to add anything right now, don't do anything. City colleagues? Go ahead, you want a discussion? Illustrious Councilwoman Angie Reyes English, please.
Well, thank you. Let me see. So I, I'm really grateful to the Public Works Department for, uh, including, uh, bike lanes. That's like a first for Hawthorne, big time. Truly, and I do see our, our, our scooters, our electric scooters that are using it. I do, I do see occasional, uh, bike riders, um, using the, the bike lanes. My concern with regards to immediate enforcement, might have a little concern there, but I understand the efforts that you want to make, because it's been policy on the books for years now. I get that. I just don't want our, our police to be, um, you know, kind of like added, added work at, at a minimum as not a, you know, real priority. You know, I, you know what I'm saying? There's, there's like priority.
For our police?
Yes, there's, there's serious priorities that we want to, to review, and I wouldn't consider uh, a bike on a sidewalk as an immediate. You know what I mean?
Chief? So I think, this would be the traffic bureaus, uh, the traffic and the parking enforcement, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be the police, would it?
Uh, it would not be the parking enforcement officers, as our parking enforcement officers are not sworn peace officers and can't enforce certain sections of the vehicle code. I think that there is a legitimate middle ground here that begins with acknowledging the fact that recklessly operating any bicycle, e-bike, or, you know, human powered, is a safety concern for our, our entire community. And I do think that there are some laws that are currently on the books that the Hawthorne Police Department, our staff can begin to enforce when appropriate, when we see somebody operating a bicycle or an e-bike in that reckless fashion. I am aware that Captain Port has already begun doing some, uh, local research with some of our neighboring agencies to find out what statutes they have uh, on their municipal codes in order to give them a little bit more teeth in enforcing this. The only concern that I have, uh, in regards to an immediate enforcement of an e-bike statute or for individuals riding a bicycle on the sidewalk is, at the end of the day, it is an infraction and we have to, uh, take the level of that violation into consideration uh, in how far we would like to push any enforcement action. So I'm aware that my counterparts in neighboring cities are oftentimes faced with people on bicycles who just refuse to stop. And I'm personally not inclined to initiate a pursuit utilizing police vehicles of somebody who's on a bicycle on a sidewalk. I think that it just increases the level of danger to our community. And just to put it in a little bit more perspective, we consistently cancel vehicle pursuits at the Hawthorne Police Department, because the level of danger that those vehicle pursuits pose to the community exceeds the necessity to catch somebody for a property crime. All that being said, to not do something about it, I would say is also a mistake. I think we need to make the effort. And for those people that are willing to stop and cooperate, there's an opportunity to educate. And if there are repeat offenders that do that, perhaps engage further with, if it's a juvenile, engage with their family members, their guardians, and educate them and utilize whatever enforcement we can as far as citations and fines.
No, thank you for your feedback, and, uh, I'm just kinda curious, at what point will it elevate in your scale of importance? When somebody's, uh, uh, ba- baby stroller gets hit by one of these and a kid gets injured? When somebody gets knocked down, a senior, is, is that the point I wish you would elevate it?
Uh, well, certainly, if that did happen, I think that's a mistake to wait for somebody to be seriously injured in one of these cases.
I'm gonna tell you, I'm gonna tell you something that happened, and this is why I'm not really happy with your response right now, Chief. I remember there was complaints of people crossing Hawthorne Boulevard, right there in St. Joseph, going across to Ralph's. And community members from North Hawthorne and parishioners from St. Joseph's kept saying, let's put a sidewalk, let's put a light, let's put a sidewalk. And it took a lady parishioner who went, was going home to get killed and run over there for it to be elevated in the level of importance for our, our city hall staff. So I think you should reconsider that, uh, implement some of the things that I'm suggesting. And, uh, uh, PSAs, notice, whenever you do encounter these things, it's not a conversation. It's an immediate impounding of these things. If, an occasional sting? Do you understand what I'm saying? I'm really serious, because, and I, I'm sorry I'm, I'm saying that. I'm a little frustrated with, uh, with seeing this happen and the complaints that I'm getting and how like desperate some of these residents are. If, I, I don't wanna pull, I don't wanna pull our police and have them just, that's, that's not on the type, level of the things they're doing. But let's have a couple of things, let's send a message out there, the laws are already in the book. And let's, let's show that we've, if I ask you how many of these things of bikes or, uh, e-bikes we've impounded, how many have there been?
E-bikes, sir?
E-bikes.
That's one of those municipal code sections that I'm not aware that Hawthorne already has on the books.
No, we do.
We're kinda powerless at this point to do an impound of private property.
Mr. City Attorney, is that something that we could do?
So, um, there is a specific code section that we have under the Hawthorne Municipal Code prohibiting, um, bicycles and e-bikes and any vehicles from, right, being ridden on the sidewalk. Um, I don't think there is a provision that specifically authorized police officers to confiscate. Um, but I think that's, that falls in different area of law, which I would have to look into. In terms of the vehicle code, um, if I may, the vehicle code, the state vehicle code treats bicycles, bicyclists to abide by all vehicle, vehicle rules as it would apply to, um, automobiles as well. So these are violations, but having said that, and going back to years of, of seeing some of the law enforcement and prosecution work, is that there are a lot of, uh, vehicle codes that officers has on the streets, they would have a discretion to enforce or not. I mean, they're, they would see, certain officers would see, for instance, someone violating speed limit. It doesn't mean that officer will always enforce that. But I trust the, the members of our police department that when they see some conduct of someone acting egregiously, taking highly risk, um, maneuvers on the sidewalk with e-bikes or bicycles, and it's to a point where it's, uh, this endangering, uh, the public, uh, safety, then I would, I believe that the officers would take that enforcement action when they observe something like that. These are things that has to be observed in the presence of the officers as well.
Okay, I wanna, no, I really appreciate that, but I'm not saying that, I'm not here to say that they, they wouldn't or wouldn't. But this is something that we've noticed, something we're elevating for the community on their behalf. And so, that being said, oh, Chief, respectfully, um, you said, uh.
Captain Port.
Captain Port, um, distribution, could I, could I just refer to, ask him if, if that's okay with you? Sir. Um, and the question is gonna be, um, what have you, as of now? You said, uh, you've been in contact with other, uh, agencies. What kind of enforce, I, I don't want heavy duty like enforcement of this stuff, okay? Um, I know we have high priority things we deal with here, but this is very important because of the situations, this email that I received and other calls that I received. Go ahead. What have you, what, what powers have they used?
Uh, good evening. Um, well, certain places have done different things, as you mentioned. Manhattan Beach, Hermosa Beach, and El Segundo, they all have the strand, which would probably be equivalent to our Hawthorne Boulevard or our concerns with people riding e-bikes or bicycles down the main boulevard is, um, we have restaurants that now have outside seating, Pizza Show is one of them that comes up to mind, to where we have patrons of businesses coming back and forth, um, on our sidewalks. And so that, that's how I equate that to be the, uh, the same issues they're having. They've looked at some of their municipal codes and different lenses of different views of laws, which I would have to collaborate with our city attorney. Um, but they've looked at just, just downright, uh, seizing some of these, uh, e-bikes, they've classified the different e-bikes into, um, what's actually street legal, what's not, what, what you need to have a driver's license for, what you need to have a license plate for. what, what you need to have a driver's license for, what you need to have a license plate for, the CCs or the, the power of the bike and how fast it goes. So all these different departments have actually done the heavy lift in regards to finding out what's supposed to be on the roads, what's, nothing's supposed to be on the sidewalk. I think we can all agree on that. But it's at what lens and what kind of bike that we're looking at, where we can start imposing either fines and/or impounding those bikes on the spot. So it's a work in progress. I know that the beach cities are far, a little bit further down the road than we are. However, it's something I would collaborate with our city attorney to find out exactly and specify what we can do and use some of the same techniques that we've used with like the street takeovers and going out and pounding cars after the fact and that remedied people coming into our city and doing street takeovers pretty quickly.
And so it's just sending a message that this is not Hawthorne, you can't do this type of stuff.
It'd be a pretty big deterrent.
Would, uh, would it be a deterrent in your opinion, based on kind of what I described, say like the stings? Is that what, you know?
You could do certain things like that. It would be more of a collaboration with our traffic bureau to go out and observe some more of the problem areas. There's get with you and some of the other council members of where you've been receiving some of your emails from in regards to problem areas and really concentrating on some of the folks and business owners that are dealing with some of these issues.
Go ahead.
Okay, and I don't know who wants to answer this. So there was make mention of, uh, uh, this is an infraction, right? That this could be an infraction. At what age would that infraction be given? Moreover, I, I, I prefer the PSAs, which is the public service announcement, if we're gonna be rolling out something like this so that the community could be educated and be engaged as to what's happening, right? So I would want to know, at what age is an infraction, uh, the law for anyone at this point riding a bike? And who's responsible for that, for that ticket? I know it would be the parent, but, um,
I would equate it to being truant, around those same ages. You know, if you're a juvenile or you're a minor, your parents are on the hook for whatever your activities are that finds you in a place that you're gonna have to find yourself in court and/or dealing with law enforcement. So that's usually a sticking point with people who go out and buy their kids these bikes is knowing that they're gonna be on the hook for the impound fees and/or buying a three or four or five thousand dollar bike and then having it impounded two days later because they're whipping down Hawthorne Boulevard.
Chief wants to add something to that.
I just wonder how much the infraction's gonna be?
That I don't have the information on. The fines are obviously going to be set by the traffic court or by the court system. I will add that in, all very, very good questions and very, very good points. I will add that we do have a criminal standard. We're generally speaking, for individuals not over, not 13 years of age or over, law enforcement has a, a legal obligation to determine that they can tell the difference between right and wrong. So again, that has to be balanced with what our, our mayor's concerns are and what our residents' concerns are. If somebody is 11 years old riding an e-bike at 40 miles per hour on a city sidewalk, their age is gonna be secondary to what we do. Our, our job as the police department is to ensure the public safety and we just need to have the tools available to us to stop that individual and contact their guardians and perhaps temporarily impound that bicycle.
So real quick, real quick, I think based on our conversations, an informant, a PSA and notices and then a rollout period, like would give people the word to spread, say you can't do this anymore?
Yeah, that's been the standard with the different agencies I've spoke with is that it started with about a week or two of social media advertising, hey, this is what's gonna happen, this is what you should expect. And then shortly thereafter, a rollout of enforcement to follow up with that.
And if we were to impound these, uh, these vehicles, e-bikes, we have ample storage in the basement?
Yes, that won't be a concern.
That wouldn't be a concern?
Through the chair.
Yes, sir.
I would suggest Captain Port to contact the South Bay Cog because they've been working with some of the beach cities, especially the school district, that the kids have to pass some type of licensing thing. They have like a, a safety, a safety thing before they can drive their bike, for example, from home to, to the schools. The other thing that I would suggest, there was a bill in Sacramento, I think it was last year, about how to address the, the e-bikes. So I don't know if that bill passed. I would just say, you know, just do some little research to see if, if, if it did pass. If maybe it's now is under the DMV guidelines or something like that. But I think the South Bay Cog, they've been doing this for a couple of years, working with the school districts, especially all the beach cities to make sure that those kids were driving those bike correctly and safely. So just check on that.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So council colleagues, based on, I mean, you see how like a little bit, you know, I get, you know, seeing this makes me upset, but could we agree that we could just have the chief? Start something, give us a plan? And I know, I know Captain Port is.
The, the chief to work with the city attorney?
Oh, of course.
There is some laws there that's from the DMV and, and, and some of the traffic bureau that can, can we, we will adopt something similar.
So I, I need more specifics here. We're being directed to work with the city attorney and the police department to, for the enforcement purpose? Because we already have the code section.
The enforcement aspect, strategy, elevating this in importance of, you know, what we're gonna do, PSA, informing the public. You know, people, you can't, I mean, you can't put canopies on your, on your, on your driveway. But people, some people still do it. I mean, if we had, that was a problem, we'd be coming up with the PSA on.
To the chair.
Or informational thing on how to, on not to do that, so go ahead.
Well, Captain Port was just talking about, you know, collaborating with, you know, South Bay Cities, Manhattan Beach, El Segundo, Redondo Beach, on what efforts they're making for similar tasks that the mayor is asking of the police. So I think if we just kind of see what the language is and the ordinances that they have and maybe, you know, work around that and see what we could do. But I'm more interested in like the educational component of it, the PSA component of it. I want to know if they, if there's a requirement for safety gear, which includes a helmet and, you know, safety gear. Because I know motorcycles don't have, that, they don't have to, right? Because that was a law that was passed that they don't have to wear a helmet. There's, from what I understand, there's some.
But they have to wear a helmet.
Okay, there is, from what I remember, there was, they're trying to pass policy that didn't require it. But anyway, um, yeah, I would prefer, uh, you know, parents to be aware and to have their kids protected with the necessary gear and to know of potential infractions, 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 especially if they're not being supervised.
To the chair?
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Thank you. I've been waiting to talk, so.
I just want to say, I kind of echo some of the things that Councilwoman English said. I personally feel that to have our officers spend so much time on this issue is not a good idea. I feel like you guys have more important pressing things that are happening in our city and to spend so much time and so much energy on somebody riding a bike, I just think it's ludicrous. I also believe that you guys with adjoining cities, we have all these people coming in and out of our city. We need to be focusing on those people that are coming in and out of our city. And I know during the summertime, our crime increases substantially. And so for me, uh, to spend the manpower that we have focusing on a bike, I think we're getting to the place where we're just policing people way too much for things that should be natural, like being a kid, riding a bike, right? So for me, I don't think that we should spend so much time on elevating whatever the mayor has just mentioned. Sometimes he get one call and he uses that to say the whole world is shutting down because of one incident. And so we need to extra, extra, extra police stuff. And I just don't feel that we should be doing, spending our manpower when we got so many things that are happening, so many things that are gonna be coming to the city in terms of events. And I think that should be our focus, not spending the amount of time focusing on trying to chase down somebody on an e-bike. I feel like you're, you see somebody, you guys already know what to do, right? You're trained, you're police officers, you're the best in the South Bay. You already know what to do. You're not gonna sit there and ignore if somebody's doing something they're not supposed to do. You guys are not gonna ignore that. You guys are gonna do your job. And I trust and believe wholeheartedly that I don't need to be policing you guys to police the community as it regards to e-bikes, right? So the extra elevate, I think is unnecessary because you guys are already doing that. Like you're not gonna sit there and ignore. But if somebody just, you guys get a call for domestic violence and somebody's like running, riding their e-bike, you gotta make the decision which, which is more important or elevate. I just think that the focus should be on the community, the high crimes that we already are experiencing. And I know that certain people may not think that what I'm saying is important and they may not like it, but this is my, my thoughts on what we should be doing in terms of e-bikes. The laws are already there. You guys are already totally aware of what to do if you see something. So thank you.
All right. Okay, so no, thank you for your feedback and that's fine. But since you threw my name in there, I have to respond.
Of course.
So, so are you opposed to what the mayor brought before the council? Or are you opposing what the resident brought to me to relay to our police department?
What I'm proposing, you just asked me.
I got, no, it's a rhetorical question. It's, so, so which one is it? Is it me or is it the resident? Because if it's me, it's personal. If it's, okay, so let's be very, you know, it's, it makes it very obvious, okay? So there must be something else going on. But the, when a community, our obligation is to listen to the community when we get these emails, these calls, okay? That's what our obligation is. And that's what we're here. We're here to serve, we're here to respond and we're here to elevate whatever we hear from the community that they feel is important. It's absolutely our obligation. That's what we should be doing. I know we like to organize events and have different things, gala, gala, you know, type of events. Yeah, a lot of wonderful things.
In a pool.
Yeah, okay, I have the floor right now. Okay, I didn't interrupt you when you kept your talking, so just please be respectful. Thank you. So this is an issue. This is an issue I brought before the council, is an existent one. The community is our eyes and ears. They tell us what they're concerned about and they're the ones that come and ask us to make, elevate things, to make things important. Our police, our police. How many patrol cars do we have out there in the community?
On average, between six or seven patrol units per day.
That's six or seven police, you know where I'm going with this. That's six or seven police cars that are out there. Single man cars and maybe mostly single man cars, right? Single man or women.
Make sure of both.
Okay, I'll make sure. They cannot be in the community at every single location in Hawthorne at one time. So our residents are our eyes and ears on what's going on in the community. I don't know if you knew that it was six or seven police cars at one time. So therefore, the avenue in which residents get to bring things before us is through telephone call to the police or to us, okay? And so that's what we're doing, okay? I don't want to go directly and start getting personal even further, but please don't discredit what the residents are doing and their civic duty in relaying things to us. I think it is important and I don't, I wish this doesn't happen, that the first accident happens. I don't want to refer anybody to this meeting comments that were made, that their concerns weren't important. They're all important, okay?
To the chair.
And it's, I will give you the floor. And especially some of the residents from Holly Park and some of those areas that have come before this that you have advocated for with the police and with city services being focused in that area, okay? We respect that, we support that, so. But just a quick response to what you said, but go ahead.
So you came to the council and you asked us individually to speak on this and what our opinion was. So I gave my opinion. I shouldn't be discredited because I disagree with you. This is how I feel about what you're presenting. And all I'm doing is presenting how I feel about the subject. So if I disagree with you, which that does happen during council meeting, we don't always all agree on the things that we bring. But we are individually elected to bring our opinion on how we feel about a situation. I'm sorry that I don't agree with you, but there's no need to discredit me and try to make me look bad in front of everybody because I disagree with you. I am here to give my opinion. And as I give my opinion, you are taking it personal because you're upset because I don't agree with you. So for me, all I'm doing is giving my opinion on what you presented. And you've done this before and, and so have I. And you have not always agreed with the things that I have presented. So I'm just here, just giving my opinion on what you asked, what my opinion was and what our colleagues' opinion was. And so that's my opinion.
No, and that's fine. We're gonna move on to the next thing. I know, and it wasn't discrediting to you. It was defending what the resident that called me asked me to do. Okay, I have, we have a resident, a single resident that came here and talked about the parking issues. That was one person, because it was one person that came up, the young lady right there. That wasn't enough for us to take action? No, one person at the podium, one call could be sufficient for us to be able to take action on, so. So my, my, just a simple request, if you could just proceed with just looking into this for us and give us just some type of strategy report?
Absolutely.
Something that's reasonable and something that's gonna be impactful and just get rid of the situation.
Mr. Mayor, if I can make a recommendation? In maybe two to four weeks, we bring back with the help of a city attorney, police department, a presentation that's gonna roll out incrementations of valuable information that we can pass to the community. And from there, council can give us direction on how to move forward.
Yeah, yeah, and you, you, Captain Port, you've, you've, you've been talking to them and you kind of know the problems. And I mean, as somebody who's been working the streets, you know, chief you as well, of course, I'm sorry. You guys see what the issues are and see what we can realistically do, but at least to make a dent and send a message, right?
Absolutely.
Thank you. All right, thank you, my council colleagues, for your comments. Elected officials reports. City Clerk?
Thank, I want to thank everyone for coming out. Just a few things really quickly. I want to let everyone know, just in case I haven't before, about signing up for agendas. You are able to do so online to receive agendas to your email. If anyone ever has any issues with that, please feel free to give the city clerk's office a call. Also want to let you know too that there's a plethora of information on our website with respect to press releases, things that we have coming up. A lot of this stuff is on the site. I also want to talk about public records requests because we get several of them. And some of the public records requests, you know, they aren't really public records requests. You know, there are things online that you can find that would satisfy that. So I just encourage people, rather than wait for days for a public record request to come back, if you're able to look on our website or even if you have a question about it, please call me because I may be able to help direct you in that, that space. Lastly, we can expect that we'll have a redistricting vote coming up in November. I'm sure that you all have probably received some information, but as I receive information about that, I will relay that to you as well. I did get a call from the registrar's office and we will be moving forward with that vote. So you can expect that special vote to come in November. But you'll get more information probably before then. And that's it for me. Have a great night and thank you all for coming.
Councilwoman Manning?
Thank you, Mayor. So we've been gone for a little bit, so I have an opportunity to attend several community events. One I want to highlight, we had a really, really great time, was National Night Out. It was so much fun. Captain Lane, he had councilwoman and myself come up and we did a presentation. Well, not a presentation, but the Congresswoman Waters came and, and gave. and gave us her certificate. And it was a lot of fun. So, I just always want to highlight that because it just shows the work that our police are doing in our community and staying engaged. So, we had entertainment. They sang really great songs. We danced on the stage. It was a lot of fun. So, thank you for that, Captain Lane, Captain Porter. I also had an opportunity to attend Port of the Long Beach. I did a tour to see some of the things that are coming in and out of the Port of Long Beach. It was very interesting. And just living here, as long as I've lived here, had no idea what the Port of Long Beach really was imports and exports. So, that was pretty cool. The other thing that I wanted to address was, one of the residents came up and talked about the parking on 127th Street. I believe we've had multiple people come up in the past, city manager, and talk about that street.
I'm sorry, what street was that again?
It was, well, 127th Street. The resident came up and talked about that street earlier.
122nd.
122nd.
Yes, we've had concerns regarding that. Can I talk or, okay. So, within the parking assessment, it's just not about meter parking. It's giving different recommendations, how to suffice and how to address each neighborhood. So, this item is not a passable item with the research. It's going to be an item that we're going to bring to council and discuss. There will be different meetings to discuss, excuse me, discuss certain items in the presentation for the assessment parking survey. So, that area will be surveyed to give best recommendations to assist with the issue in that area.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we are addressing the resident that came up that spoke about it.
Well, it's just not that one resident. We have 90,000.
Wait, can you say that again, sir?
It's for this issue here.
No, no, no. You said it's not just one resident. We have 90,000.
90,000. So, the parking assessment is going to address the business community, commercial and residential.
Yeah. I just, you know, heard the one resident thing earlier tonight, so. Also, I wanted to talk about, I had an opportunity to go to Ramona PTA Ice Cream Social. And I think like 400 kids must have came. That was so much fun. I had an opportunity to give out books and backpacks. I'm sorry, I had some backpacks left over. And one of the things that we were doing was in order to get a backpack, you had to follow the city of Hawthorne on social media. I also had an opportunity to partner with Chase Bank and host a backpack giveaway and books. And we also gave out about 300 backpacks filled with supplies and books. And I will continue to make sure that I give out books. So, just call me the Books and Backpack Lady if you want. I think reading is so important. And, you know, with all us living in the digital world, some folks miss the opportunity to actually touch an actual book. And so, it feels so good to be able to give out books to kids. And I just have to say, at Ramona, I've never seen so many kids face at one time light up just being able to touch the books. They were just so excited. So, that really, really, really resonated with me. Also, I had an opportunity to attend one of our residents. She's lived here for over 50 years. Her name is Geneva Frutrell. And I wanted to ask the mayor if he could close the meeting out in her name. Geneva Frutrell. F-R-U-TRILL, T-R-E-L. Okay. The la, oh, and then, sorry, city manager. I just wanted to get an update on the illegal dumping signs. I think we, we talked about this and requested this a few council meetings ago. We had a big discussion. I have gotten several calls regarding people asking me if they could put up, we could put up the illegal dumping signs.
To my knowledge, they were installed, but
Okay.
I will circle back with staff to see the exact areas of installation.
Okay. And I'll just, the emails that I get, because people just text me pictures of the location of where the trash is and just keep asking me to send someone to pick it up. So, one of the things that I do consistently is tell them to go to the app. But I have also called, what do you, Don from Republican.
Don Harris, yes.
Yeah, I've called her also. And she just said that we can, if we get calls, we can also reach out to her and she'll send someone over there to pick up the trash. But I keep seeing and getting calls regarding still illegal dumping going on. And I know that we can't monitor every place that we're getting illegal dumping from. But what I'm trying to see is, is it happening in the same place consistently? And then if it is, to make sure we have a sign in that location. So, I would like to ask you if maybe you can have staff check if people are going to the app and if they're reporting on a consistent basis, specific areas, that the illegal dumping continues to happen. And then the last thing that I have, so excited, so excited. This is a moment that every, oh, I got two minutes. Okay, I'm going to try to talk real, real fast. All right, so this is a moment that everybody's been waiting for. And I am so happy to be able to announce myself, along with my colleagues, that finally, the court has issued permanent injunction on the mall, which means that we finally are going to be doing something with our, with our mall. And I just wanted to read a couple of things that the judge is requiring the owner of the mall to do. So, in this case, they have to install security cameras and lighting around the perimeter of the mall, increase night security to four guards. Within 45 days, they have to install fencing and secure for trespassers. In addition to this stipulation, the court's permanent injunction orders are as follows. Hard deadline of August 31st, 2026, for the groundbreaking of the development or the demolition of the mall property. This means all the entitlements, C-E-A-Q, permanence must be obtained, and construction, demolition must begin no later than August 31st, 2026. The judge stated either it must go up or it must go down. Regardless, they have to do something, and it has to be started by August 31st, 2026. So, finally, we have people, we are moving forward in the right direction. And I want to give a kudos to our city attorney and his staff for making this happen. Thank you. And that is it for me.
Sorry, thank you. Councilwoman Angie Race English.
Thank you. So, let me just real quick make mention a couple of events coming up at our senior center, the luau dance Friday, August 29th, 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. We have flyers out in front. And I look forward to the ribbon cutting ceremony of the Crenshaw Village, which is Tuesday, September 9th at 10:00 a.m. And thank you and kudos to all with regards to the facade program. There's a couple of businesses that got that grant. So, I look forward to both of those, including the Crenshaw Village that's opening September 9th, their grant opening. So, let me go to my little notes here. So, DJ, thank you for your Metro Project presentation. We appreciate that. Thank you also to, to the two individuals that were here from the chamber, which we were at the Soft Cafe grant opening. And then the, I, top, what is it, top?
Tapfield.
Tapfield, yes.
Tapfield.
Yes, Tapfield, right?
Tapfield.
Oh, Tapville, okay, Tapville. A cute little place, so if you guys have an opportunity to stop by there. Let's see here. Can I just make mention, congrats to our police department for National Night Out. Great efforts on a great event. Yes, that was a great event. National Night Out was a great event. It was well attended, and we had great fun and had fun dancing out there. So, that was nice. Let's see here. We had some discussion tonight with regards to efforts by union groups. And I just want to make mention that the standing committees with the state of California, which include business, profession, and economic development, and revenue and taxation, along with rules, labor, public employment, and retirement. These are all public agencies and committees that anyone could go on and review, including union groups, so that they could know exactly who's in compliant and who's not. So, this is something that everyone must make efforts to, to track how it's helping in their efforts and/or not, and who to contact with the state with regards to those that are being fraudulent. I, I want to make mention real quick, let me see. The golf tournament, September 29th with the chamber. Thank you to Ms., I have it here, listed as Arelli and undersigned Hawthorne residents. Thank you for your email. I don't know if she's here still, but I got it just now. So, thank you for that. Thank you, Vaughn, for the park projects and the potential openings. A lot of folks wanted updates, and so I think this needs to be on a regular and just to keep the community abreast with regards to messaging on social media and our website, Wreckin Parks also website. Can I, can I just make mention for like licensing departments? Can we get like a regular, new businesses that have opened in Hawthorne? You know, what that looks like for us? The reason I say this is quite often, I know that I had made a request some time ago for a moratorium on car washes and massage parlors. And I think there's too much of that. And I had asked for a moratorium on those types of businesses. I think we have way too many of that. I'm more interested in friendly business, businesses. For those that don't know, we're, we're going to be losing Walgreens at the corner of Prairie and El Segundo. They're leaving.
Oh, yeah.
What, what is that?
No, Prairie and Rosecrans.
Prairie and Rosecrans.
Yeah.
What did I say? Oh, I'm sorry, because I stay off of El Segundo. Okay, so way out there on Prairie and Rosecrans. And I had a chance to go in there to see what goodies they had, and I picked up a couple of things. But, yeah, so, city manager Vaughn, if you don't mind, just kind of making efforts to get us regular, it doesn't have to be all the time, but maybe monthly, just to kind of get an idea of what types of businesses are coming to Hawthorne. I really, really, really dread, dread those types of businesses. Car washes galore, massage parlors. And I really believe that we need to start going in, and I'm giving a task to building and safety in those, to go into the massage parlors and see what's really happening in there. Because, I know, do you remember a long time ago, we, we sent, we sent staff to these establishments at the stripper joints and plus stuff like that? Yeah, that was a really hard job, but they want, I mean, you know, what I'm saying is basically, what I'm saying basically is, you know, I've been told and I've been, you know, other businesses that live or have a business establishment next door, and it's always, you know, never good information. So, I think we just need to make efforts to go actually inside versus just passing by. And then there's some businesses that are actually closed. They've been closed for such a long time that they still have their business with tables and chairs, like it's a restaurant. They still have signage and things like this, but the lights are out and there's never anybody there. So, it's kind of like, what are they doing with that business, right? You know? So, we just need to look into this, this stuff. There's a lot of that that's happening along, especially on the Inglewood corridor, Inglewood and Rosecrans Avenue on the west side of the street. Let's see. Thank you, Vaughn, for suggesting the rollout and presentation with regards to bikes and those, those alike on our sidewalks. And I really believe that just educating folks and getting them to, to ride on our bike lanes is probably the best way to go. But I understand there's also some, you know, some seriousness to this as well. So, I do respect that. Let me see, there's a couple of other things I wanted. Oh, so this morning, I went out for coffee and I came across a coyote that crossed right in front of my path. And I chased it in my car, not far. And I moved off to the side and I parked and I got out. And as soon as I got out, sure enough, he went to the back of a house, snatched a cat, had him in his mouth. So, I started honking the horn, trying to get it to drop it out of his mouth. The lady with her child that just dropped off her student saw me. She throws her cell phone at, at, at the coyote, and he dropped the cat. And it was a little tiny kitten, and it survived. And so, I want to recognize first that, one, we do have coyotes in Hawthorne. Two, I'd like to ask that we put together some type of signage in the community on resources or phone numbers for those that come across this type of experience. You know, there was also something similar in, in the city of Carson. A little boy was bitten by a coyote while people were playing baseball. So, just to make sure that we have resources and information, signage, maybe with a phone number for wildlife, fish and wildlife, or fishing game, these types of resources. Because unfortunately, excuse me, the city of Hawthorne does not have the resources to send out staff or to pick up and/or let alone store coyotes. So, this is the, the second one that I've seen. It was actually right outside where I live, the big one. Looks like the mother or the father. That was a big one. But today, it looked like it was one of the babies out there. And then I was speaking with community members on Oxford and some other streets right behind York. Mr. Harris was the one that had his cat taken. And two other constituents said, yes, that they've had similar and that they've had them actually in their backyards, coyotes in their backyards. So, be careful out there. Make sure you're being vigilant and, you know, take care of yourselves out there. I think that's going to be it for me. It's, it's a holiday long weekend, right? We have a long holiday weekend? Yeah, so, so drive safe. Before I go, I just want to congratulate city clerk Dana Williams Hunter. She was recognized and is our new Democrat of the Year. So, there's going to be a dinner. There's going to be an honoring. And so, kudos to you, Dana, and all the work that you're doing, just, you know, in everyday walk, right? Your, your office, your efforts to give away food, to bring, you know, give food to those in need, your whole, you know, public records request, you know, crunching that paper into digital, bringing in interns to assist you, bringing out outsiders to assist you, taking courses to develop you into, you know, certified municipal clerk, you know, master's municipal clerk, your notary. I mean, I could just go on and on and on. And so, yeah, you are worthy of a Democrat of the Year. But anyhow, thank you, Mayor.
And it was your birthday, right?
And her birthday?
Yeah, happy birthday.
Happy birthday. Happy birthday. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday Dana Williams Hunter. Happy birthday to you. Yay. And many more.
And of course, it was Ms. English, you know,'s birthday too, on July 27th. She turned 6, so.
Doesn't 40 look great?
Anyway, many more. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to be, I'm going to try to be quick, right? First, you know, I just want to say thank you to all of you for coming and for those who are leaving at home. Thank you for all the presenters that we had today. Especially, I want to say thank you for the LA 28 Committee, because I feel proud of our staff that they have vision and it goes along with us. So they're moving hot on forward and we're going to be on top of things. So thank you for all of that. I just want to mention that I know this is going to be Hispanic Heritage Month coming up, right? So I would like maybe us to do something like we did with the African American heritage, you know, something over here on a Friday or Thursday afternoon, right?
We did, we actually have that. We had a little Fiesta in the park, right?
Have a Fiesta, what I think?
We had a little Fiesta in the park.
Last year we did. We have, we have nothing scheduled this year as of right now.
Yeah, that was the second, that was the second year, but we had Fiesta in the park.
So it's just, you know, we can recognize some people in the community, you know, like we did over here with the African American self, because I don't want nobody to say we discriminate. But anyway, just think about it. And also I want to say my deepest condolence to the Dr. Joe Jackson's family, because I know he was a longtime resident and senior commissioner, so. And he was a smart man. So I was proud that we recognized him at the Black History Month, so. My sympathy to the family. I just want to mention that the Clean Power Alliance and the Calpine have this community benefit grant. So it will be launched in September. They're going to provide $280,000 to nonprofit to invest in the community that is going to do project for clean energy. So they're going to give 12 organizations, 12 grants, right? That go from $15,000 to $30,000. So you can go to the Clean Power Alliance website and you'll find out more. Or you can just email them at info@cleanpoweralliance.org. Again, info@cleanpoweralliance.org. You will find the guidelines for the annual community benefit grant that will be launched in September 2nd. And the due date of the grant is September 30th, okay? The other thing that you can find at that Clean Power Alliance website is the CPA Voyagers scholarships that help students and local community college pursue renewable energy careers. So just go there and look, they have a lot of information at the cleanpoweralliance.org. Again, you know, so we continue to do things to benefit the people of Hawthorne. Vaughn, any plans for 9/11?
Yes, we're currently working on that. We plan to have the event, a remembrance event on 9/11, 8:30 a.m. Details are still being worked out and working with the police department, community services, and city manager's office. So 8:30 September 11th at City Hall.
All right, thank you. And again, you know, it was a good summer. I was away, so I enjoyed myself. And thank you for giving me the August month off. So I, because when I go abroad, I have to take three weeks, so thank you for that. So again, good night, everyone, and I'll see you guys next time.
Thank you. Anybody have anything they do want to finish up, go back, go back on?
Can I?
Yeah.
So just real quick, I was going to actually ask our city attorney, because we have so much confidential's with regards to the mall and things that we've been working on with regards to that issue, that I really wanted to see how we could maybe discuss the mall without having to go into anything that's sensitive in information. But I think we owe it to the community so that the community is aware of what is happening. It might be in press and all this other stuff, which is, you know, there's an ongoing issue there with that particular company. But I just want to make sure, and I have my confidential's here with regards to other stuff, but I really want to make sure that the community knows and is aware of what's happening at the mall. Because we're still, you know, people still think that it's ours, that we own it, and we don't. And just last, just last week or this week, the city of Los Angeles has similar issues with regards to the same property owner on businesses that he owns in Los Angeles. So it's just an ongoing issue. And I just want to make sure that the community knows that we fought very hard to resolve these issues. And we will do better to make sure that they're aware of what's happening versus just hearing it, you know.
I totally agree with you. It is also frustrating for me that I can't disclose to the community of a pending litigation when we're in the midst of it. This has, so far, we, as soon as I was appointed as a city attorney, we made it a priority to initiate the lawsuit, knowing that civil lawsuits like this can take, can drag out for a while. We sought to try to get a preliminary injunction. That's an injunction issued at the very initial stage of the lawsuit and that was denied. But while the case was pending, I couldn't discuss what was going on. It's still technically pending. But what the judge has already ruled on, such as by granting our motion for summary judgment that precludes the trial on this case, and also granting the recent permanent injunction, that's something that's a public document, that's a court record. So I could disclose what happened there. In terms of reaching out to the community, I thought the best recourse is to, there's been a person that's been inquiring, that's related to the press, that I was finally able to disclose and give out copies of the court order. And that led to a potential publication in the local press. And that will probably come out this weekend. But which I think they're going into in-depth research into the property owners. As Councilwoman English mentioned, that there's a new nuisance in the city of LA. I think that's in North Hollywood. And I just read another article about another property that they own in West Hollywood that's also kind of in a bad state. And, you know, I wish there was another way of disclosing. And I don't know how much detail to disclose at this point, other than what the judge has already ruled on. Because this case is not over yet. So we have, the case is open until at least there is a final disposition. And that's, the judge set the deadline for that to be August 31st of 2026.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Mayor Proton, real quick, go back.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to mention that we guess it is a beautiful fall newsletter from the city of Hawthorne. You can look at it online, it's a beautiful one. And also, if you have any three and four-year-olds, there is a free preschool at the castle, 14025 Cordaro Avenue, just send your kids over there, it's free. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Oh, this is to be quick, come on, guys.
Yeah, Robert, can you please just give us also an update? Not tonight, but, you know, where we're at with the tunnel with regards to, you know, the boring company and where we're at with the tunnel and how soon can it be filled?
All right.
Thank you.
I want to be careful when I let you go back, man. All right. So guys, thank you so much for being here. Thanks for all the healthy discussion up here on the council dais. The residents who came to speak, who've been contacting us, thank you. Ms. City Clerk, I know you said that we're going to have a redistricting election. I know that we usually pay for, you know how sometimes we pay, we won't be paid for this one?
Nope, not on us.
Not on us? Okay. So ours are, for our elections where our elected officials are up for reelection, right? We pay for that.
This is this year.
I know, but like, we only pay for the ones, like, election, the components of the elections where our council members are up for election.
Our general election.
And for when we, for when we put like a proposition, a measure within our city, right?
Exactly.
Crap, we're going to, we have an election this time and then we're going to have an election next year. I know, I know a couple of our council members up for reelection, so. It's, it's, it's right around the corner, so election time, okay? Boo, I know. North Hawthorne Community Association is having a picnic this Saturday from 12 to 4, August 30th. At Eucalyptus Park, everybody's invited. They wanted me to relay this to you. North Hawthorne's picnic, 12 to 4, August 30th, this August 30th, Saturday at the Eucalyptus. Come check it out and then you get to see what the park looks like before all these grand renovations, right? There was a Movies in the Pool, great success. Staff organized it in its entirety, so thank you staff for you guys organizing it. There was about 400, 400 people there that enjoyed it. So comments that were, that were made were that, you know, thank God we have this in our city. You know, we never heard about an event like this before. And yeah, you know, so people from even outside of the city were trying to clamor to get in. But so we had about 400 people there and it was a great success. The children were very happy with this, the children of Hawthorne. Okay, so let's just check off. One, two, three. Dr. Joe Jackson, he died, he passed away. You know, he served us on the senior, the senior citizens commission, you know, very lively character. You know, he, you know, he spoke his mind. But he was very effective in supporting the senior commission, you know, very active. Towards his latter years, he was a little sick, so it was a little bit difficult for him to be mobile and, you know, it affected his health. I'm sorry to hear that he passed away, so. Very sorry. The permanent injunction is great news. I know that, I know that nothing that was talked about today was anything that, you know, was not public record. So it's a big deal, guys. I am the owner of this mall. First of, first of all, like this thing, the mall, if you guys remember, the last, one of the last shops closed up like in 2000. So that was like the last, last store that closed up in the mall. There was like two or three that were just straggling and just, I don't even know why they stayed open. They should have all shut down at the same time. But as you guys know, this, Danny Bakel bought it. He was going to do something with it, but then Armin Gabeek bought it. And so he's owned it for a length, a very long time, probably like 20 years or something. He's owned it for 30, I don't think so. No, 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 no. How many? 25 years, right? The 25, 2000? Because Danny Bakel bought it like five years before it closed. So he's owned it since 2000. And it's been a mess. It's been a mess, you know, he owns it. He, he's come, he has come back to the city with these proposals and projects that he wants to have. Big box stores and like a couple thousand like apartment buildings, apartment units. And, you know, the, you know, we asked him, hey, we need a mixture of things. It's a real mixture, not this fake stuff like you have over here, some of these things where the the mixed use could, you know, little flower shop on the bottom and you got like 200 units on top type of stuff. Right, we wanted something with a good mix of things. That's why we developed the Hawthorne Boulevard specific plan. We voted for it. We voted for this, this is what we want. But the Hawthorne Boulevard specific plan, and it's not just Alex Vargas talking about it, it's the community and our, and our city council. We all said, we all agreed at the end that we needed solid commercial component. And we accepted the residential component, right? But this guy, five or, I have five or six like plans that this guy developed. I kind of have them in my drawers. And it's just, you know, it was fake, it was fake. He was just prolonging things. He wasn't, he didn't want to do anything. He didn't want to do anything. He want, ultimately, unfortunately, there's comments that were thrown out there that he just wanted to land bank this thing, that he wanted to save for when his kids were grown older so they could sell the property and not have to do anything with it. But of course, you know how property values increase over time. And so who ends up benefit? The kids, this dude's kids. But we as a community suffer, we get frustrated. What do we call, it's a public nuisance and it's annoying. So we retired the games and the council elements of the council before, and the council now said, you know what, enough is enough. And all along, I want to commend our city attorney, Robert Kim, for his hard work. You know, it's, it's, it's hard to, you know, sometimes it's like, what is he doing? What is he doing? Was he, he's been, he's our bulldog, man. He's like our bulldog. So to reach this point is like fricking awesome. So let's just give him a round of applause and thank him. Seriously, man, you know, if it wasn't for him looking at this and focusing on this thing and keeping us up to date and, you know, you know, he knows how important this is Hawthorne. So thank you for stepping up, sir. So it's not over yet. We, I think, but we're like, I think we're on solid footing. This guy's not going to be able to play games anymore and we're going to get something done. So thank you to Councilwoman Katrina Manning for listing the components of that. The state of the city is this Thursday, August 28th at 5:30. Make sure you guys come, there's a number where you can call and make like RSVP, 310-349-2910. And it's at the Hawthorne Aquatic Center, the Hawthorne Pool. At 5:30, it starts at 5:30. There's going to be a cocktail hour and live music from 5:30 to about 6:30. And then we have the state of the city address that's going to start at 6:30. Everybody's welcome, it's free, just come up. It's another wonderful, organized event for city staff. So I want to thank city staff for stepping up. You guys have been having your meetings and have, you fashioned this the way you wanted it to look. You guys given me information to be able to, be able to share with the public.
Yeah, question? I was just wondering, do you have the digital billboards announcing this around the neighborhood?
Yes, they were put out, they were placed out yesterday.
Okay, thank you.
And I also want to just tell our council member colleagues, just make sure you guys, just tell your elected officials friends to come independently. I've kind of laid off of this, you know, planning thing, let staff kind of do it because I think personally, I think it's best that when we want, we want the city staff and departments to express themselves and to make this what they want it to be. You know, it's a reflection of their work and their successes. And so the planning is going to, of this event is going to reflect that. So thank you, city manager, for assembling a great team to organize this, okay?
Will you be there?
What do you mean by that? What are you trying to say?
We need you.
What are you trying to say, man?
We need you there.
I hope we get to sit in front and not in the back.
Ah, my God. Stop, guys, you guys come out, dude. No, thank you, guys, thank you, thank you. Make sure you guys, tell your friends, okay? Oh, I almost forgot, did I forget anything, Mr. and Mrs. Baba? Okay, we, okay, so I hosted a meeting with all the South Bay mayors that came. We met with the consul general of Mexico, Carlos Gonzalez Gutierrez. Over here at the Marriott, we had a meeting where we listened to what he was, you know, his perspective and his role in his, you know, with his consulate on various issues, their services that they offer to citizens of Mexico here and those who would like to be citizens and, you know, just Americans who would like to visit Mexico and all the different things. And of course, the topic came up about the immigration enforcement. And mayors that were present were from Rolling Hills, Rolling Hills Estates, Manhattan Beach, El Segundo, Hermosa Beach, Redondo Beach, Culver City, Compton, Torrance, Jesus, Longdale, Gardena, El Monte, Montebello, Pico Rivera, Norwalk, and a couple of other mayors. So it was a fully loaded mayor's meeting and we benefited from it. And we had our experiences as a council. Remember that we had people that were kind of expressing, and we had an operation here, an action that took place here in the city of Hawthorne. And some of these cities, of course, you can just imagine, didn't, haven't had anything like that, like open happen in their city, so. But they do have residents that are of Mexican descent. Um, but they do have residents that are of Mexican descent, some who are impacted. Operations are taking place all over, and so this is some information they can take back to their community and be able to share with their community. So very well-spoken, uh, gentlemen, um, and everybody had a great time, uh, discussing openly at this, uh, meeting, okay? So just wanted to report that out to you. And, uh, we do have a number for those people who might, uh, whose families might be impacted by the immigration enforcement, whose family members of Mexican descent. And, uh, I'll talk offline to you, see if it's a possibility, see if we can or not, uh, put that up somewhere, okay? I just need to determine the, what the legal aspects of this is. The ribbon-cutting, there's going to be a ribbon-cutting ceremony for, uh, the reopening of Crenshaw Village on Tuesday, September 9th, at 10:00 a.m. This is at 12730 Crenshaw Boulevard, Hawthorne, California. This is the facade improvements and the whole improvements of these facilities. Because we know we drive by there, it looks okay, but this is going to be a definite improvement. And we're just highlighting our entrances to the ci-, to the city. So thank you. But I know that, um, Mayor Potem Montero didn't really talk about the events, but we got, we're going to have our, uh, on October 25th, we're going to have our, our Halloween costume contest and celebration. Uh, we have, we're going to have the Touch a Truck on Saturday, October 11th, so that's a big, uh, event too, with a lot of kids there. So there's just a lot, let's take advantage of it. Oh, okay, so, and we're going to end real quick now. I've been taking advantage of the pool to cool off, it's been hot, right? So, you know, we have a Monday, Wednesdays, and Fridays from 4 to 6. Right now, rec swim. Take advantage of it, it's full, right now, it's a lot of people there. So it's, if you don't have anywhere to cool off, you're looking about cooling stations, you got Monday, Wednesday, and Friday from 4 to 6. So you could just go in there, you know, uh, wear your, you know, whatever, you're going to wear a bikini or whatever. You know, you, uh, you know, Ronnie can wear his Speedos and jump in there, you know, and have a good time, cool off, or whatever it is. But it's good, uh, very fu-, fu-, full, so, um... Yeah, oh, oh, no, no, be nice, be nice, Mr. Bobo. Angie wants to go.
There's weekend hours also for recreation swim.
Oh, is, what is it?
11 to 1, Saturday and Sunday.
That's still there at present, all right, wonderful.
Just let me know when you're not there.
Oh, my God, eh, vichole. What is it with you guys coming at me like this today? Geez, I'm trying to be nice, all right? So that, okay, so we're going to close the, uh, meeting as requested for, uh, Geneva Fratell. A moment of silence for her, and let's include Dr. Joe Jackson for this, let's have a moment of silence. Okay, uh, may they both rest in peace and that perpetual light shine upon them, right? So this meeting is adjourned at 9:51 p.m. Thank you guys all for being here.